It is one o'clock and it is Rodney Byrne's day. Thank you for reminding us, Council Ferguson. And that Council on happy birthday. So I will bring the regular meeting of township line of council to order and I would like to start by saying that I'd like to acknowledge the traditional territories of the Coast Salish peoples, in particular acknowledge our relationships with Kecy, Queensland, Masqueet and Semiamo First Nations. And with that, I'd like a motion to adopt to receive the agenda items. Council Arneson, second of Council Whitmarsh, Council Richter.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question of clarification with regards to item I one on the agenda. And my question of clarification is item I one for us to actually give third reading? Or is it for us to forward the applications listed for third reading?
These are now for third reading. These are the ones that have been forwarded to today for this purpose of third reading.
Okay, so are we are actually voting today on whether or not there will be a cannabis store at each of these locations?
Yes, we'll be voting on each bylaw, yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Here with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And the agenda opposed and that carries. Thank you. And the next item is approval of additional delegation request. Uh, Mr. Gary Vanderveen. Uh, just for everyone's information, uh, we, our procedural bylaw requires a two thirds vote to approve, uh, the, uh, any delegations that are passed, uh, the number five.
I'll make, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we, that we hear the delegation, you wish, sir.
Second, Ferguson. Council Long moves. Council Ferguson seconds it. A discussion, Council Richter, your hand is, is that still up on before?
Uh, sorry, I forgot to take it down.
Okay, no problem. Okay. I see no discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Council Woodward, Council Davis opposed. Uh, the motion carries. Oh, you're in favor?
I'm not, I'm not opposed. I'm in favor.
Oh, sorry. Okay. So I was carried down us. Alright. Okay. Sorry to tell. Okay, so with that, um, move on to adoption of minutes. And there are four sets of minutes there. Regular council meeting on January eleventh, public hearing on January eleventh, special meeting on January eighteenth, special meeting on January eighteenth. On that day, if I can have a motion for all, please. Council, Council Arneson, second is Council Davis. Any errors or misses? If you're not, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed and that carries. Thank you. Now move on to delegations and C one is, we begin with Mr. Christopher Duffin. And just for all the delegation's information, which you probably already are aware of this, you have five minutes to present to council. If you could please identify yourself at the beginning and I start the timer after you've identified yourself. And I will let you know when you come to the ends, if you need to wrap up. Thank you. So start with Mr. Duffin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, pleasure to see everyone here. Uh, Christopher Duffin here speaking. Uh, as a resident of the township of Langley, an employee in the sustainability space, husband and new dad, I am pleased to offer my support behind the township of Langley's climate action strategy. I, like others in the township, share a common goal to protect the health and vitality of our community against the effects of climate change impacting our built social and natural environments. The future of our community, of our children and of our legacy is dependent on commitments to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. It was only a week ago when our family celebrated my son Theodore's second birthday. And in tradition, dad wrote a letter to his son reinforcing some ideas and how we might approach his journey ahead, writing, "The world certainly has its obstacles, so set your sights on greater things and pursue goals that give you purpose." And as I reflect on these words today and the opportunity to speak to council, I challenge all of us to consider along the same. As community members, we must recognize that we have an important role to play in reducing emissions for the health, livelihood and safety of our families, friends, and for future generations. But we cannot do it alone. We are all in this together and united, we are stronger. Setting ambitious goals is a catalyst and will serve to activate all members of the community around us, this, around this common purpose. To council, thank you for recognizing the need to address this important issue and for giving citizens the opportunity to express our desire to be part of the solution. Further, taking up the important task of setting new and aspiring climate goals for our community and for recognizing the need to develop a comprehensive climate action plan to ensure we reach those goals. I certainly believe that together and through this plan, we can build a strong path forward for our residents. We can protect our environment and strengthen the resilience of this vibrant community we all call home. These actions facilitated and backed by council reflects the values and aspirations of our community and will inspire other communities, even the world, to take up the same mission. The issue of climate change concerns many families and individuals in this community who wish to see our community positioned as a leader and that promotes a more sustainable way of living. The shift to low carbon economies will be positive for communities and workers, future-proofing our businesses and economy, our livability, while protecting the planet for future generations. As stated earlier, we are all in this together. And as various sectors of the community come together to address the challenges of climate change, we as citizens must aim to be part of the solution. Together with the leadership of council driving our climate action plan, we can make significant strides. Climate change impacts all of us and climate leadership is vital for ensuring our community remains a desirable place to live, work and play. And through collaboration, we can accelerate this transition and realize the future that humanity wants and needs. As a father, it is my view and call to action that I should live by example and leave this world a better place for my son Theodore. And what amazing opportunity and calling. Will you join me in making our world or community a better place for Theodore to thrive? Again, on behalf of our family, we offer unwavering support behind the township of Langley's climate action strategy. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Very much. Alright. Thank you for presenting to us and that was interesting with the letter to your son. That's a, that's a good tradition. Uh, so thank you. Uh, the next delegation is Mr. Tim, Tim Stevenson.
Hello, councillors and mayor. My name is Don Park.
Good, uh, excuse me, if you could just speak a little louder. It's quite quiet coming through.
Hello, councillors and mayor. My name is Don Park.
My name is Nicolosio.
And my name's Eli Hacker.
We are grade eleven students on the behalf of Walnut Grove Secondary who are greatly concerned about climate change. As youth who will lead the next generation, we are here to ask you to vote for the climate action strategy proposed by your township. As a passionate and aspiring high school student myself, whenever I heard bad news about climate change, I instantly became depressed and worried. I did what any concerned students could do. I joined my high school green team. I volunteered for every single opportunity. And this year I became the green team president. As much hope I gained through advocating climate action through my high school green team, deep down, I still felt anxious and I still felt concerned. How much could a high school student possibly do to affect climate change? I still have to breathe in the smoke from the August air. I still have to endure the hot summers that are just becoming hotter and hotter. I can do and adapt to all the individualistic changes in order to just try and halt climate change. But even then, I know for a fact that without a change in the system, without the adaptation of this climate action strategy plan, it's going to be too late. When I have become a leader in the next generation, no matter what change I try to create, these disasters are just going to be irreversible and worsen.
We need to be realistic in what we plan for our future. And this climate action strategy is a perfect example of that. There's no one cure for climate change. We need to start by facing this issue at a local level. And with this plan, specific changes can be made to the way we emit greenhouse gases. The five big moves that the township has presented targets major areas of our local community such as transportation, vehicles, and new and existing facilities and buildings and natural rainwater capture with the goal to reduce emissions by forty-five percent by twenty fifty, or twenty thirty, sorry, and by one hundred percent by twenty fifty. There are a multitude of reasons to act now, but because of time limitations, I will only cover the most crucial points. As future taxpayers and adults, we are seriously concerned about the rising costs associated with the effects of climate change, such as floods and storms. Financially, the climate action strategy will save much more money as one dollar invested now will equal up to three to five dollars in the future. This incentivizes the reason to act sooner rather than later. The cost per year through twenty thirty is about one hundred thirty dollars increase per household. That's around ten eighty-three per month, which is a reasonable cost for a cause that will affect everyone. Furthermore, the plan addresses transportation and mobility, the most crucial carbon emission contributor. Diesel gas alone contributes about fifty-four percent. So a plan targeting a shift into EV and developing future areas for encouraging people to walk more is extremely beneficial. Finally, I would like to focus on the fact that many other communities in B.C. are enacting their own climate action strategy. Just last November, the city of Vancouver has approved their own climate action plan. We also believe that it is our responsibility to do our part as well. We should lead by example so that others can follow.
Mr. Mayor and councillors, your decision on the climate action strategy will dictate the way Langley residents interact with the environment for years to come. In this moment, future generations are looking back at you. And children and youth of our township, the next leaders and innovators are looking up to you for significant action. And it's on you to decide your legacy. Were you the council that took significant measures to protect our livelihoods, our infrastructure, our homes and our futures from the climate crisis? Or were you the council that stood by idling? Council that ignored the findings and recommendations of the climate action strategy and the council that failed to act after declaring a climate emergency? I implore you to consider the future of our township and the future of your children and grandchildren as you vote today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, completes your presentation. I really appreciate, uh, young people like you stepping forward. Uh, Council Richter has a question. Council Richter?
Actually, I think it's more of a comment. I just wanted to congratulate these young people for stepping up to City Hall and trying to make a difference. Very well done, gentlemen. And I was very impressed to see how many, uh, emails and letters that council received from students in high school on the need for climate action. So I, the only question I would ask, did your classes discuss this action strategy as something that was important?
Um, yes, um, in my green team, I presented the, um, climate action strategy plan. And we have, um, talked about it and we really found how crucial it is to take action right now instead of later.
Well, very well done and never doubt that your voice does count. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, there are no further questions. So that again, thank you for your presentation. Now we move on to Ms. Natalie Cook.
Hi, yes, I'm Natalie Cook and thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak today. Um, first and foremost, I know it was said already, but I would like to acknowledge that the township of Langley is located on the unceded traditional territory of the Stolo people. So on behalf of young adults eager to have the hope of a positive and healthy future, I am requesting that the mayor and council vote to immediately approve the township of Langley's proposed climate action strategy. I, as I said, I am a representative for the young adults residing in the township of Langley. And I'm a member of the Climate Crisis Langley Action Partners Group. And I also served as the president of the Trinity Western Environmental Club for two years. Since moving to B.C. five years ago, I have been and still currently am an active member of the community. However, in the past two years particularly, I've been working hard with my teams to highlight and emphasize how large of an impact our actions have on the future. Volunteering as a lead role in organizing the twenty nineteen all candidates federal meeting as well as the twenty twenty all candidates provincial meeting regarding climate change, this serves as an act indicator of how passionate and invested I am into, into creating local changes. I am also an avid climate change researcher and I have applied my studies within the city of Burnaby through a project surrounding climate change in an urban setting. My advisor for the project, David Clements, a professor of biology at Trinity Western University, was not able to present a delegation in support of the climate action plan today, but he did ask me to pass this statement along. He says, "As a climate change researcher, I am keenly aware that the data and research that goes into a plan is critical. Having gone through the details of the township of Langley's climate action plan, I am confident that this is a solid blueprint for constructive action on climate change, forming a concrete, well researched plan needed to facilitate the township's efforts to reach its emissions targets. I strongly endorse this plan and encourage council to seize this historic opportunity. This plan will provide a framework for making responsible decisions that will not only benefit Langley's carbon footprint, but also its economy and environment as a whole for decades to come." So thank you, Dr. David Clements, for that. My previous work of, my personal previous, previous work of writing a letter of support in favor of the climate action strategy has allowed me to be very confident with my conclusion that this plan is well researched and is of massive environmental and economic value for the township. The purpose of my delegation today is to highlight and emphasize, emphasize that we are living in a state of climate emergency. We must put our words to action and approve the proposed climate action strategy. I want to see the township of Langley have a future and hope to, hope that together we can make a tangible change that will positively impact many future generations to come. The changes that we make today will not only impact us, but should also be seen as an example for many other townships and cities that unfortunately are finding themselves in similar positions. Along my journeys and involvement within leadership positions and being a part of groups, I have met numerous young adults that are also passionate about change. Throughout my experience, I am constantly reminded that we live in a community that cares and a community that is ready for change. Climate change is well researched and the implicated predictions have been widely accepted. So validity is not the question. The question is, are we going to make the right decision moving forward? Will we move forward with intentional action to put a stop to predicted disaster? Or will we follow history, waiting for disaster to strike only to then have to scramble to clean up after our avoidable mistakes? The time to decide is right now. So I speak for not only myself, but also on the behalf of young adults eager to see the hope of a positive and healthy future. I urge the mayor and council to vote to approve the township of Langley's climate action strategy. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you. She's here from high school and now referred to university. That's excellent. Thanks. And now we move on to Ms. Natalie Brunner.
Hello, my name is Natalie Brunner and I would like to start by also acknowledging that the township of Langley is on the unceded territory of the Stolo people. I am a student at Trinity Western University and a current co-president of Trinity Western University's Environmental Club. And I'm requesting that the mayor and council vote to immediately approve the township of Langley's climate action strategy. On July twenty-second, twenty nineteen, the township of Langley council passed a motion that declared that we are in a climate emergency. We need to respond to this the same way that we would respond to any emergency, direct action. The township of Langley's climate action strategy is this direct action that we urgently need. The Langley climate action strategy has two main portions, adaptation and mitigation. I want to remind you that adaptation to the changing climate will have to happen no matter what. Just as we have been forced to adapt quickly to the COVID nineteen pandemic, globally, the lack of pandemic preparation or early adaptation has resulted in many lives lost. The choices then are to decide if Langley will adapt in a sustainable, long-term manner or be constantly scrambled to adapt and respond to our changing climate. Many of us have noticed that in the past couple of years, we have been getting more extreme storms that have resulted in a lot of fallen trees. The climate action strategy is responding to this through including taking preventive maintenance of trees to help prevent them falling in storms, improving erosion control and expanding invasive species control. Not responding to the climate emergency will prove to be more costly in the long run. The government of Canada estimates that the cost of managing climate impacts could rise from five billion per year in twenty twenty to twenty-one to forty-three billion dollars per year in twenty fifteen, twenty fifty. This means that early adaptation and mitigation is both a more sustainable and economically viable option. Mitigation is another key aspect of the climate action strategy. According to the U.N., cities account for around seventy-five percent of greenhouse gas emissions, with transportation and buildings being large contributors. This is why the climate action strategy will promote sustainable transportation and zero emission buildings. Additionally, Canada has joined the Paris Climate Accord and is committed to reducing its annual greenhouse gas emissions to thirty percent below two thousand and five levels by twenty thirty. It is imperative that we, as a municipality, do our part to meet these targets to ensure that we do not rob our future generations of life and give the future generations hope for a positive future. On behalf of myself and the Trinity Western Environmental Club, I am imploring that in light of the climate emergency that we are facing, the mayor and council vote to immediately approve the township of Langley's climate action strategy. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, so now we'll move on to, um, C five and it's Nora Babcock and Karis Munch.
Hello, Mayor Frozen Council. My name is Nora Babcock.
And my name is Karis Munch.
And we're here today because we're concerned for our future. We're concerned because climate change is going to impact our lives, the lives of our children and generations after that. As Dr. Seuss quotes in Alorax, "Unless someone cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not." If you have ever read or watched Alorax, you know that all the trees get cut down and the animals have no other choice but to leave. And that is our fear for what will happen in the future. I watch the news and hear about wildfires, hurricanes, flooding and snowstorms happening all over the world and I'm scared for that to happen here. And if we act now, we can prevent future damage to our planet. I used to live in Willoughby and now every time I go to visit, I've seen it change over the years into big buildings and houses, but not as much green land as there used to be. And I really hate to see that all go. As an animal and wildlife lover, I would hate to see all the wild space disappear. I'm also hoping there will be more trees. I walk to school every day with my friends and it is becoming unsafe on those busy streets with such narrow sidewalks that we have to walk in a single file line and that is not fun for anyone. This generation is the generation who will be voting and is also the generation who is learning so much more about climate change. So when we turn eighteen, we won't be the ones not looking for the person who will build the most buildings and houses, but the person who cares about the planet and climate change. Even though we're just one city, we can make a difference and not end up like the Alorax. And right now, we want you to think like, not to think like mayor and council, but as moms and dads who care about what will happen in their child's future and what will happen next. We're asking you to make the right decision and say yes to the climate action strategy because it's our future and we need you to protect it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Very passionate. Really appreciate it. I have Counselor Ferguson and then Council Richter with some questions.
Okay, Nora and Karis, uh, thank you for coming today. Oh, wow. You certainly had a good. Now, are you students of, and involved with the environmental club or anything like that, if I may?
No, no.
You're just people really concerned about climate action?
Yes.
Okay, and so are your parents, apparently?
Hmm, yeah.
Okay, uh, Kara, you mentioned you used to live in Willoughby. Whereabouts you live now, if you don't mind me telling?
I live in Brookswood.
Oh, bro, that's where I live. It's a great place. There are lots of trees there. Okay, I thank you very much for coming. It's always nice. As a former teacher, it's always nice to see people, young people standing up for climate change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Council Richter?
And I just want to echo Counselor Ferguson's comments. Um, well done coming out and speaking to a, a council meeting at Township Hall. Uh, it's very important that we hear your voices and I'm really, really happy to have heard your voices. So thank you for making the time to talk to us today. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Now I'll move on to C six. It's Mr. Gary Vanderveen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councillors. Uh, my name is Gary Vanderveen. I reside in Milner. And I am the pastor who Counselor Davis mentioned recently. The guy who, and I think I'm quoting now, stands in a soapbox to preach to ten to fifteen cars. Uh, for the record, my church is not, uh, defying the provincial health orders and we are holding drive-in services. However, I'd like to draw your attention to three concerns that I have with the permission exemptions from property taxation motion, uh, which you will be discussing this afternoon. One, as you know, the Canadian Charter of Rights recognizes as a fundamental freedom, the freedom to peacefully assemble. And if a government wishes to limit that freedom, and they can do so, I recognize that they have that, uh, right to do so. But if they do so, they must abide by the rule of law and fulfill several conditions. The B.C. provincial government has engaged in the appropriate process with respect to mobility freedoms, that is interprovincial travel, but they have ignored the process with respect to faith communities vis-à-vis their charter right to peacefully assemble. And so my concern, my first concern is that if you vote in favor of this motion, you will be implicitly condoning charter violations. Uh, concern number two, as you know, the B.C. Civil Rights Association, uh, many legal experts and even, uh, a judge recently, uh, have observed that the provincial health orders are fraught with inconsistencies and ambiguities. Uh, I, I can, for example, hold a support group in my church that includes a talk or a sermon, uh, singing, food. But if I have that same meeting and I designated a worship service instead of a support group meeting, it suddenly becomes a prohibited activity. And so my concern is that if you vote in favor of this motion, you will be implicitly condoning the inconsistencies and ambiguities in the provincial health orders. And then third, my third concern, as you know, science matters and evidence matters. Today, worship services have not been places of transmissions, a transmission, even though many were gathering weekly during the fall. COVID nineteen is a public health issue and as such, we need to base our decisions on science and on evidence. And my concern, my third concern is that if you vote in favor of this motion, you will be implicitly condoning or condemning faith communities who are exercising their freedom to peacefully assemble and doing so in a manner that does not increase the risk of spreading the virus. And this may well be perceived as condoning a specific ideological, um, agenda instead of embracing evidence. Uh, thank you for listening to me and I want you to know that my prayers and the prayers of my congregation are with you.
Thank you very much. I just want to advise, the only motion that's on the floor under E one is a, a motion to receive the report. So, uh, I hope you understand that if that passes, that's only council, second to report to staff provider for the amount of councils request. If council wishes to go further, that would require another motion. So stay tuned. Thank you. But thank you for your presentation. I have two questions to council. Uh, Counselor Davis and then Council.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I wanted to acknowledge how your church was positively, positively embracing the health orders and was getting creative by holding a church in a safe manner. And I, maybe my communication, I don't know if that was the way you took it or not. I just wanted to, uh, to, to, uh, say that again. So, um, well done in keeping our community safe. That's my, my thoughts. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. I, I'm done now, Jack.
I, I assume that you're, you're trying to get, you're still.
I was having trouble with my unmuting from, uh, space bar. I guess it wasn't working.
Yeah.
Uh, Council Long, go ahead.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for your, uh, your presentation or your delegation. Uh, you didn't mention, although you did in your, in your documentation, uh, this motion that, that Vernon has approved, uh, in terms of, 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 of declaring that perhaps a gathering, uh, for churches and for worship may be an essential service. I'm not sure that we're going to go i- i- you know, in that direction here at council because I, I, I tend to think that this is an issue between the, well, certainly in, in my opinion, is an issue between the public health officers and, uh, and the general public and municipalities are, are we're actually creatures of the province, so we really don't have any ability to weigh into that decision, although you make some good points. And I just wanted to encourage you to, uh, perhaps gather the other, other churches together from Lanley and from the surrounding area and, uh, and make a delegation to the premier or to your MLA or of course to, to Dr. Bonnie Henry directly to, uh, to advance your cause because I know that there was some ta- talk about it in November that she said that perhaps, uh, Dr. Henry said perhaps, you know, things could be looked at. Certainly some, um, changes were made and, and, uh, acceptance of restaurants and bars and other places, uh, have been allowed to gather. We don't need to get in the debate. I think we all know that it's so, it's so challenging that we, we're trying to use common sense in getting through this pandemic, but there are so many different things that perhaps in, in, in our minds that don't make sense. So, uh, we're not gonna, I don't feel that the municipality can weigh in on that, but now that you've come to us and, and given your opinion, I, I would encourage you to some. but now that you've come to us and, and given your opinion, I, I would encourage you to somehow organize a meeting with our, our newly elected MLA or perhaps uh other ministers or others in the provincial government to uh, to ask for some more clarity around this and to certainly uh, you know, put forward your three points, which make a lot of sense and, and hopefully some changes could happen. Because I think the churches could actually lead the way in how we can learn to get back to gathering and, and being together by putting in strict protocols uh and, and following them to the T and making it a very safe place to uh, to be, you know, in, in the same room. And I know that these days uh we sh- we surely do need that, so. That, that was all my comments. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you very much. Uh there's no further questions, so thank you, Mr. Vanderveen, for uh delegating to the council. And uh so now, just gonna turn over to Ms. Bauer regarding the uh health contact services.
Um just for a process matter, Mr. Your Worship, um if we can have the delegation portion, so the individuals who are on the meeting for delegation. If you could uh leave this meeting and you can go to the township website and link to our um online viewing of it, uh just so that we can kind of move people in and out of our meetings. So again, you go to the township, township website at www.tol.ca and if you use the um easiest way is just use the search box and look up for council and you'll be able to watch the meeting from online that way. And next, uh your worship, we have the uh, the health contact service presentation.
Great, well, thank you very much. Uh so now I'll move on to D1. It's the health contact services presentation. People here from Fraser Health, so let them take over and introduce themselves. Thank you.
Yes, hi, Mayor Frozen Council. Uh, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um so um my name's Dan Kipper. I'm, I'm a director in the Public Health um department in Fraser Health. And um I'll introduce our, our team here shortly and we'll do a, a presentation today. And thank you for the time uh that you provided us uh to talk about our, our topic. And what we wanted to talk about today is um he- health contact services and specifically um overdose uh prevention services and how we want to develop some of those in the area of Chilliwack. And we wanted to give you an overview of some of the planning around that. So um the colleagues that have joined me here today are um Dr. Fernando Mejia. He's our medical health officer who um is responsible for the vulnerable populations as well as overdose uh response. And he'll be um presenting um some of the data and some of the recent statistics around overdose deaths uh within Fraser Health and uh Langley in particular. Um our project lead Anjessa Mohammed will be talking about the um uh overdose prevention services and he- health contact services and how we've been um developing requests for proposals in various communities to procure um those services with various uh nonprofit agencies who are providing those services. And then we'll round out our presentation with um uh Erin Gibson, who is our manager in population, public health and has responsibility for um looking at um overdose prevention as well as harm reduction initiative. So uh with that being said, I'll turn it over to Dr. Mejia for um his uh presentation. And I'm not sure if the presentation will be put up on screen or not. Um if I could just check about that. Or do you have copies of that in front of you?
No, I can give copies. No, we don't have copies. So if you're able to share the screen, put it up there.
Yeah, I can share the screen. Just one moment. Um actually, I don't. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes, you have it up, but you have uh the first slide, the next slide, I have it in the corner, so I don't know if it's the format. You can set to view it. We have both slides.
You can see both? Sorry.
That's important. Part of the program.
Dan, can you tell me what you see?
Uh it just shows starting slide three of twenty.
Okay.
So if you can back it up and it may be just, it's gonna have to project two slides at a time.
Okay. Uh let's just stop. Sorry. How's that?
Yeah, that's good. That's uh
Great. Okay, Dr. Mejia.
Um hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Mejia. Um and I'm the current medical health officer uh working at Fraser Health. Like Dan Kipper said, I'm in charge of the um overdose and vulnerable population portfolio. So dear mayor and dear councillor members, it is a pres- a pleasure and a privilege for me to um speak to uh you this uh, on this day and just trying to tell you a little bit more about the particular situation that we have that is related with the overdose debts. Um this first figure, as you can see, is showing us the overdose debts in B.C. And this is updated um until last November, which is the data that we have at this point. As you can see on this graphic, we have on the um, on the rights, on the left side, uh we have debts. So these are a number of debts and it's going from zero to eighteen hundred. And then on the, on the right side, uh we have debt rates. And this is basically uh the calculation of how many deaths per a hundred thousand population in B.C. Um and then on the X-axis, you can see that we have data that is coming from nineteen ninety-four till two thousand and twenty. So this is a good way to show how this is trending. And as you can see, um back in two thousand and fifteen, we started to see uh a surge in the amount of debts related to overdose, which continue that um concerning trend. Um we were able to put some measures in place and get, and get some results by two thousand and nine, and eighteen. Um and that's why you see that in two thousand and nineteen, we, we, we reduce um and in an important number, the amounts of debts. However, due to the situation that we have with COVID, uh things like uh stopping some of the services that we have available for the community, isolation that has been requested by public health. Those are all un- un- unwanted or unexpected consequences of the public health measures we've put in place. So we are seeing an important spike in the, in the number of over- overdose debts. Um and as you can see right now, uh we are sitting uh around the fifteen, uh fifteen hundred, a little bit more than fifteen hundred debts. Um and of course, uh this is a very important thing that we want to um to address. Um what is more concerning about these particular debts is basically that uh this is occurring in a population uh that can be considered uh young adults mainly. Um and in the years of potential lost life because of that, um adds more to the picture of losing lives for something that we could uh support and avoid. Um next slide, please. This is um going a little bit into the details uh and what is happening in Fraser Health. So as you can see, we are seeing the uh, the number of illicit drugs that are related to uh toxic, toxic dr- uh number of, of illicit drugs to CCD debts. Um and we are seeing the number, the number of um, of those particular um situations from since two thousand and ten up to two thousand, to twenty twenty. Um and again, it's similar to what I just uh show you uh in, in terms of having some spikes around tho- those same years, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, having some control around twenty nineteen. But then having a new spike uh that is bringing up to uh five hundred and fifty-six projected death uh for twenty twenty. Um although twenty twenty has finished, we don't have the whole data. And that's why we are still working with the, with the projected total deaths. But we'll be able to provide uh some updates when, when we have more um on this particular information. Next slide, please. So basically, what is concerning is that seventy-four percent uh is the increase that we have in overdose deaths in Langley. Uh and that is as of twenty nineteen, which is the year where we have complete data. Um so as you can see, we are, we are trying to put information that is meaningful and it's easy to understand for you. And what we can say is that since twenty sixteen, uh we are seeing Langley losing a hundred and fifty-seven individuals due to overdose. Um which, um as you can see in that particular line that is highlighted, um it means um a, a seventy-four percent in change if we compare twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty. Um so these are, again, the data, the most recent data that we have. Uh and when you see a spike um that is changing in a seventy-five percent uh and you add to these that the group is in a group of relatively young people that is still productive, um losing their life because of something that we might be able to support and to improve. That's, that's when, that's why we are having this conversation today. Next slide, please. One of the reasons that we uh have uh to explain this situation is the amount of toxicity that we've seen among street drugs. Um we, we've noticed that uh even though during the pandemic, um it could be difficult for, or more difficult for people to get uh street drugs. Uh there might be other concerns about the kind of um drugs that are, are available in the street and the, the, the different toxicity that uh that can represent because maybe lack of some of the, of the uh products that they use or maybe because it's more difficult to get or uh, but what we've been able to identify is that there's more toxicity in what is available on the street. And uh as, as you may have heard in the past, fentanyl is one of those substances that is um uh a, a big killer. And we've seen more of the, of, of the concentration of that particular substance. So as you can see here, if we compare January uh twenty nineteen, that, that segment from January twenty nineteen to May twenty twenty, we're seeing that spike of uh from six percent in the terms of toxicity to thirteen percent. That, that's the one that we've seen uh April to November uh last year. Next slide, please. Uh with the other thing that is important for us is uh where we are seeing those deaths happen. Um as you can see in this particular table, um most of those deaths that are reported are happening inside home. Um either private home or other residence uh settings. Um so as you can see, basically eighty-six percent uh of those uh deaths are happening inside. So this is no longer um a problem that is related to people who are homeless or people who are in ex- and uh or vulnerable populations or socio-econom- or low socioeconomic status. This is actually a situation that is impacting our society in general. So that's why um we think it is very important that we put efforts to address this situation and make sure that uh we can develop strategies um to address not only those individuals that we see on a daily basis uh when, when, when we have issues with homelessness, but also those individuals that for some reason um are consuming inside. Next slide, please. I'm going to um leave the conversation uh to my colleague.
It's an overview. You might, you might take me a, a question from a member of council probably related to the slides you showed. Uh councillor Richter?
Um no, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question, but I'd like to hear the rest of their presentation before I ask him.
Okay, fair enough. We'll, we'll go to the other presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you can advance to the next slide, Erin. So this diagram is just a, an overview of what we're working with when we're talking about a health contact service and what we're working towards. So just to give you a brief overview, so at the direction of the Ministry of Mental Health and Addictions and in partnership with municipalities, nonprofit agencies and others, Fraser Health is working to implement health contact services for people who use substances, providing access to services across the continuum of public health and mental health services, which include but are not limited to witness consumption. There is an identified need for a coordinated access to health services for individuals that use substances across Fraser Health. So currently, overdose prevention and harm reduction services offered include harm reduction, supply distribution, peer-based harm reduction outreach, take-home naloxone training and distribution, as well as drug checking, witness consumption, shark's recovery and linkages to health and social services. So as uh Dan alluded to earlier, Fraser Health may issue a request for proposals, as we have in other communities. The request for proposals are issued on the B.C. Bit platform and is available for public viewing. However, we are able to provide key contacts from both the township of Langley and the city of Langley with a copy of the request for proposal prior to issuing. So we'll go to the next slide and I'll pass it over to my colleague Erin.
Thank you, Anjessa. So wanting to take this opportunity to, I, I think, sort of build upon um the model that Anjessa spoke to, which was just the piece around overdose prevention sites. So in December of two thousand and sixteen, um Minister um Terry Lake issued a ministerial order to um which was in direct response to the number of unsanctioned overdose uh response sets, sites that have been operating um with less standards and guidelines. Um and this allowed for the standardization and safety protocols um to ex- support existing work. Um and so the province really sees overdose prevention services as critical, a critical piece in all the efforts to save lives, uh lives and should be widely available across the province. Um and so really also offering an opportunity for people who use substances to be engaged and connected to other health services, while also um really uh providing uh, providing employment opportunities and other um means of involvement. So um and, and then I think that the piece around overdose prevention sites is that they can look very different um and tailored to different communities. Um but also just wanted to take a moment to dispel the myths and misconceptions um and then also provide some evidence for overdose prevention sites. So there's a large misconception that by having a place where people can witness their consumption, it normalizes, enables and encourages drug use. And all the evidence that we've seen um shows that um offering um a wide range of supports um is a really key piece to an overall harm reduction strategy. And it's often the first step um that people, um when they're using substances and are very disconnected, it's a very um low barrier entry point to connect and build relationships that feel safe and connect them to um other, other important health resources. And I think that there's lots of good evidence that um concludes um that the benefits of having these sites um that really um does it, like they, they don't see an increase in drug use and around them. Yes, this is, sorry, this is the si- the slide. Um so there is a thought that having overdose prevention sites will increase public disorder. And what we see actually in the evidence and in our communities, um that OPS services can really reduce the rates of public drug consumption, reduce the amount of inappropriate discards in the surrounding area and reduce uh property uh crime. So, yeah. I think it's also um misconstrued that an OPS is a place where people just use drugs and substances and things will never change. And what we know um is that folks um it has, uh it's a really great opportunity to, for folks to connect to healthcare and other poverty, poverty support pathways. Um it provides connection and referral to treatment and recovery, including opioid agonist treatment, detox um and residential treatment supports. Um what we've know is that when a helper aligns their goal with the goal of the client, the, it has a much larger effect size and we find um much in- uh greater increased outcomes. in people being able to make changes. We know that, um, by offering, uh, getting people connected to O T, it can reduce people's, um, overdose risk by ninety percent and reduce, um, the risk of tr, HIV transmission by fifty percent. Across the world, there's many different sort of services, whether it's an overdose prevention site or a supervised consumption service. In, um, across the world, um, there's never been any deaths in any of these sites. They allow for earlier overdose intervention, which reduces the need for, um, other emergency services. It reduces the chance for, um, hypoxic brain injury and other, other, um, outcomes, like bad, bad health outcomes. It reduces the public, uh, consumption of substances and provides a nonjudgmental space for people to connect to care. So I, going on further with the additional, um, sort of facts, what we hear from people who use these sites, that it enhances a sense of trust and connection. Um, and they're more likely to, um, engage in the referrals and, um, other healthcare supports. Reduces bloodborne infections and illnesses. Um, it also reduces hospitalizations. And so I'm gonna just, um, pause for a second. I gotta catch myself up to the slide. And I think that I was gonna hand it back over to Dan here. Just to sort of speak to a bit of the process and then, uh, open up for more questions and discussion.
Yeah, thanks Erin. Um, so what are the next steps? So as we had mentioned, we're wanting to, um, uh, develop an R F P process and that'll go up to a public, um, bidding. And we're hoping to identify a, a service provider for that, um, service. We have started the process in some other communities as well. And in some cases, we will do an R F P process, but if there is no other, uh, identified providers in that community, it could be a direct award. So we do hope to, um, develop and post an R F P, um, sometime in February for the Langley, um, area. Again, don't know where the, um, agency would identify a site or what it would look like. But certainly, um, you know, we would encourage the provider as well as working with, uh, either the township or the city of Langley, depending on the location, to have those conversations. Next slide Erin, if you can move it along. Yeah, so, um, I'm sure there are some questions and we're happy to, um, answer any of the questions. You can direct them to any, any one of us and we'll try to answer them for you.
Well, thank you for that presentation. Several councils with their hands up, so we'll start with Councilor Richter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Forgive me for my lack of being up to date on correct terminology, but am I correct in assum, in assuming that, uh, an overdose prevention site is the same thing as a supervised safe injection site?
Thank you for that. Yeah, thank you for.
Questions that might be easier. So Erin, uh, would you like to take that?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Richter. So a supervised consumption service, uh, offers some of the similar functions. However, a supervised, the reason why we don't use a supervised consumption service, um, title is because you need to, um, apply for a section fifty-six exemption from the federal government. And so, um, in Fraser Health, we, um, currently have one supervised consumption service here in Surrey at Safe Point. And with the, um, ministerial order, it really reduced, uh, the number of barriers to implement these services. They are a lot more flexible and allow for the integration of people who, with living experience to be part of the support team, which, um, is really helpful, um, for folks entering and accessing the service. And, uh, yes, so.
Okay. Now, you mentioned that you're going to be issuing an R F P in February, but it could be a direct award. If it was a direct award, who is the most likely or where is the most likely candidate for this?
Um, I'll, I'll maybe try to answer that one. So what we would do is we would go to a R F P and just see who the applicants were. Obviously, they would have to have some background in providing OPS services and a track record. Ideally, a, agency within the community where the work will be done. So in, in Langley, there may be a couple of interested parties. We don't know until we put out the R F P. Um, if there aren't any or if there is in, uh, just let's say one applicant, then if they meet the qualifications, then it may be a direct award. So we would have to see who applies to the R F P first.
Okay. Now, um, are there enough supports in Langley right now for referrals for treatment? You mentioned that this was kind of a holistic approach, that people come in, they take their drugs if they're wanting additional services, they can get referrals to those services. I have heard anecdotally that, um, people have to wait a long time to get rehabilitation type services here in Langley. If we put this in place, would that cut down the wait time for people who really want to get help and get off drugs?
Yeah, I, I don't know if it would cut down the wait time, although it may make it easier to access those services because that, that will allow for another contact for that individual to have. Because at the, let's say the OPS site, those staff would be well-versed in what's available in both the Langley community but also in Fraser Health and can help facilitate a referral to those services. So it, it not only would have, um, OPS services, but it, we're envisioning that that, uh, agency could also provide, uh, referrals to maybe home health or other types of medical care that that individual may need. So, um, so it may not reduce the wait times, but certainly it may help facilitate better connection to services.
Okay, and would the city or the township have a say in which organization is chosen? And I ask this based on previous experience that we've, uh, had here in the community with similar service organizations.
Yeah, um, we certainly would try to consult with the city or township, but at the end of the day, um, it would be based on the proposal and if they meet our qualifications, um, of what the request for proposal is. But certainly, we want to work quite closely, um, with the city or the township on, on the agency and, um, track records and those kinds of things, yeah.
Okay. Uh, I just have two more questions, Mr. Mayor. The, the first of those is, if we did put up, uh, a site or support a site like this in Langley, and I, I think you've done a good job showing that there is evidence of need for, for something like this, would it be used and how well would it be used?
Well, maybe ask Erin to maybe tackle that.
Yes, thank you, Councilor Richter for that question. I think that, uh, one of the aspects in, when we've put up the R F P, um, we've really, um, in the different facets of the application, it really has honed in, in having providers, uh, think thoughtfully about how they're going to attract and support, um, the access of the site. And so it's, um, I think that, I'll, I think having people who, um, uh, who have lived experience, who use a service and can create those really, uh, connecting relationships will help support bringing folks in. And so, um, we definitely see an uptake of these services and, um, do outreach to, to connect people and bring people in. And it's about building that trust, um, and connected relationships to support people in feeling safe. Yeah, and we know, like, we have some services in Fraser Health that are in not very welcoming spaces. Um, and having staff that are very welcoming, um, really can offset any of those, uh, transportation barriers or, um, uh, like, or, or sort of location where people might feel a little hesitant in coming, so.
Well, um, I for one would like to see, uh, more, uh, factual information around the potential use of such a service. And the last question that I have is, how does the public have a say in this? Like, who do they contact if they've got an opinion about whether or not they want a safe injection site in this community? Like, do they have a say in this? I guess is what I'm really asking. And if they do, where do they have it?
Good question. Um, I'm not sure who wants to tackle that one. I, I can take a stab at it. Um, certainly, um, public, um, input is, is really important. What we are proposing is, um, a type of a health, health service. And so, uh, in some of the other communities where this, um, is being proposed, there is, part of the recommendation in the R F P is that the service provider or agency will develop a, a community consultation table. So, um, as the service is developed, um, they would pull together the relevant, uh, partners. Could be, um, the municipality, uh, community members, uh, R C M P, so that everyone, um, has input into maybe, not necessarily the operation, but certainly if there's issues or concerns. So in, in that way, um, we do encourage and want to encourage that participation among the community for sure.
Yeah, oh, I, I definitely think the community needs to have a say on this for sure. Thank you very much for your presentation today.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Whitler.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thanks for coming today and, uh, presenting to us. This is really helpful information. Um, I just have a few, uh, questions that, uh, for clarity. And, uh, one that maybe if you just start, uh, I looked at you and when I saw your chart, I noticed that, um, when it, it so, it showed an increase in the percentage of, of people, the deaths that have occurred in Langley compared to the province. Uh, yeah, I think it's, uh, no, ba, sorry, uh, I think it was forward a couple more. I think you were talking inside or outside. Yeah, this one. Um, I'm just wondering, uh, interesting to me and maybe it just, I mean, maybe it's speculation. I don't know how you research it, but I'm noticing in the Fraser Health region, seventy percent, um, in, in a private residence versus the province at fifty-five percent. It seems quite a difference. I'm just wondering what would be, um, if there's any sort of rationale given as to why there would be a, um, almost a seventy percent number versus fifty-five compared to the rest of the province versus, in, on the inside.
Dr. Mahia, would you like to?
Absolutely. Um, thank you for the question. It i, it is a very interesting question and I can see that you were, uh, going into the details. I don't know the specific answer based on the data. But based on what we know, um, one of the things that we need to consider is that in certain health regions, like for example Vancouver Coastal, there are other services, um, that might explain why are less people using in private residence. That might be one of the things. The other thing that is important to consider, and I think this adds to the, to the need of, considering this, uh, this proposal of service as an essential, um, as an essential strategy, is the fact that there's a lot of stigma around using drugs. And we need to realize that, um, every time we are thinking about drugs, we're thinking as an addiction. And unfortunately, that is not the case. Because some people, they use just because it's part of the, uh, of their life preferences. And, and whether or not that's an addiction, that is something that can only be assessed by, by a physician. But what is important to know is that in some cases, that stigmatization is what brings people to consume alone, to consume inside residency. So again, most probably the fact that in other jurisdictions, in other Fraser, in other health authorities, they have other programs that are available for the general population, they might be using less in home.
That's helpful, thank you. Um, I have just, um, uh, two, two questions. I'll just put them into one, one, uh, question though. I guess the, just for clarification again, um, first of all, how, how do people get, uh, if we have, uh, an OPS available here in Langley, how do people get access to it? Are they, do they just walk in? Or are they have to be referred by a doctor or how, how do they get access to using that service? And then secondly, once they're, once they are there, um, it, just explain to me again the efforts that were made to move towards, um, drug use reduction as opposed to just facilitating it, but also helping them to reduce their drug use. I'm just wondering how that happens.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Erin, would you like to tackle that question?
Sure thing. Thanks, Dan. Thank you, Councilor Whitmarsh. So the hope is, is that, that, uh, we would be work, like, the service provider will be working in collaboration with existing services, really wanting to get folks connected, um, to the service and having them feel welcome about coming in. So there is no referral process, so it is really low barrier in that aspect. Really wanting to create a welcoming environment. With regards to, um, reduction in, um, in, uh, like, drug use, we, with, um, as Dr. Mahia mentioned, that not everyone that's using, uh, an OPS or using substances, um, considers themselves, um, as having an addiction. So our first part of connecting is really trying to, um, align our goals and ensure safety. My experience of being a drug and alcohol counselor for a number of years was often, um, really just trying to, uh, re-establish a connection with people that were really disengaged from care, that really didn't, um, want, uh, had, have been so used to entering a health system and being directed into, uh, a service that didn't fit them. And once they sort of realized that that was not sort of my goal, they often wanted to go in the ways that I think that you're, you're hoping. But I think that that goal alignment and relational, um, uh, investment is really the first step in sort of opening possibilities and doors for people to connect, get connected to other things. The other part of this health contact, contact center is also connecting people to the expansion of prescribers so that we are hoping to transition folks away from, um, a highly toxic illicit drug supply to a regulated pharmaceutical option that is even more connected to nurses and physicians, um, which also opens other doors for other kinds of ways that they engage in, in substance use, but also, um, en, enhances safety and, um, reduces sort of the, the potential, um, connections to the illicit drug supply.
Right, okay, awesome. Thanks very much.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, if I just may add something that I think it is very important to keep in mind is the fact that, um, previously to come to B C, I was practicing as an addiction physician in Alberta. So that gave me that experience of knowing firsthand what this situation is. And I think it is important for all of us in the audience, um, to realize that people using drugs, sometimes they are not only doing this for pleasure. In some cases, and especially when the situation is what we call an addiction, they actually use it to avoid pain, to avoid withdrawal symptoms. So when we are able to connect people to services that are going to help with that in a safe, uh, environment, in a, in a, in an environment where there's no that kind of, uh, stigma around and there's respect for and dignity for whomever is, is, uh, decided to, uh, take that path, I think that makes, uh, an important difference. And I can tell you, uh, again, in our minds, there's always that idea that whomever is using drugs is, is, is someone homeless or someone like low social income. I think it is important to realize that this is actually, uh, a society problem, a society situation and, and that now, the, we, we can't just say this is the particular group that is affected. You know, I've seen people with high education, uh, that for some reason, uh, is having issues with, with, uh, with the drug consumption. Whereas others, like I said, is just part of their, of their, um, decisions, life decisions. So I just, I just want to make sure that, um, you know, there's more, um, aside from, from what we see, uh, on the street.
Right, great, thanks very much.
Yeah, and now, how's it going?
Yeah, thanks for coming and, uh, presenting, uh, these very, uh, devastating statistics. And I would concur with what you said about, um, you know, people who use drugs. As I'm sure we all know, um, this has touched our, our families and friends and doesn't matter, you know, what background that you have. I just had a question. Um, I'm looking at this statistic about private residence and, um, I know obviously of families who've lost loved ones who've, you know, OD'd in their, in their homes. Is there any evidence that a, like, uh, something, uh, like a hel, health contact, uh, service, or what you're suggesting, would have an impact on, you know, people who are using in their private residence? Because in, in, in my head, I guess, I'm thinking that, you know, most people wouldn't, you know, drive down to a place, um, such as what you're suggesting. Um, if they're, if they're, um, you know, I, I, I understand it's a, you know, that there's high, uh, statistics in, um, young men who are in the trades. young men who are in the trades, they go home, they, you know, crack a beer and, and do their thing, I suppose. And, um, that, that's a quite a high statistic. So I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how, how that number would be impacted with what, um, some, a service like this in our community.
Yeah, Erin, uh, would you like to try that question then?
Sure, thank you, Councilor Kuntz, that's a, a great question and definitely something that we have, um, worked to consider. Uh, one of the things that we've seen in other health authorities is that when you offer other services, uh, like the, um, FTIR drug checking, so this is the Fourier, um, Transform Infrared Spectrometer that provides, uh, really detailed information about what is, um, in the substances, that we actually see, um, an uptake of, um, a very diversified, um, clientele entering and accessing those services. And, um, one of our other communities where we've issued an RFP, the, the thoughtfulness of the, um, the proponents around, um, their ability to engage with that diversified population and those individuals that you're mentioning, um, was definitely taken into consideration for, um, how we were awarded that RFP. I think that, um, it, people where they feel, um, as Dr. Mahia said, there's so much stigma around substance use, that, um, really we're working to address that. And so that's why having it as a health contact center where people can come and see other aspects of their health needs met, um, are, it, it really helps to sort of diversify why someone might be entering that building. Um, and so I think that it's a continual effort, um, as part of one of the solutions that we need to continue working on to engage different populations that use drugs.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, Councilor Arnison.
Uh, yes, thank you, Worship, and thank you very much for, uh, your presentation today. Um, in, in my not recent past, but, um, prior, I've been involved in many different meetings that were organized around, um, the Gateway of Hope and different stakeholder groups that were very much involved, including the Fraser Health to discuss all of the different challenges that we have with respect to the opioid crisis in particular. So I know that it's an extraordinarily complicated discussion, uh, that has to be had. I won't go into, you know, a back and forth in particular, but my understanding is, as has been mentioned, there are many different reasons why people, uh, have a drug addiction. Part of it's from injury, part of it's from trauma, some of it, you know, is just recreational, but it's really a myriad of things. And it's always been my opinion that the best approach to this, obviously, which I think, and, you know, stigma, works really well as a multi-pronged approach because it, uh, it, it's shocking about what the percentage of, of deaths are. But when I understood that it really, because of the introduction of drugs that are so toxic, it could be one grain of this particular type of drug that unfortunately are getting much more potent these days, that people could ingest and, uh, almost immediately die. So it's really, uh, severe. But the nature of my question then actually came from some, uh, limited research I did about the Gateway of Hope. So I'm wondering if one of your team could explain the degree to which some of these measures, the health contact services, are being undertaken at the Gateway of Hope, uh, because I believe online they do have some kind of programming there.
Yeah, I can maybe, uh, attempt to answer that and, and then, uh, others maybe, uh, Erin, if you have any information. Um, I, I know, um, uh, in many of the shelters in, uh, that are funded by BC Housing, there certainly is a, an expectation that they provide, um, uh, OPS service or OPS type services. And, um, I think one of the challenges, um, in, in Langley, if I understand it correctly, is that that has been something that has, um, not been fully supported. And so I think one of the things that we wanted to, um, provide with an OPS service is, is another option, um, for Langley, um, in the community itself. Um, I'm not sure, Erin, if you have any further information in regards to that, I know there has been some, uh, challenges there.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so the Gateway of Hope, um, prior to December two thousand and sixteen, was not offering, um, take home in a lock zone or distributing any of tho- the, those aspects. And so part of, um, when you, um, and I'm sorry, we didn't put the, what the ministerial order says. Um, but the Ministry of Order does not speak specifically to witness consumption, but it does offer, it does speak to offering a broader range, um, of services to ensure that, um, folks are able to respond quickly. And so when we worked with Gateway Hope to expand, um, their distribution of take home to lock, uh, knock lock zone kits and the thing, uh, the things of the like, we did, uh, a number of trainings with them to support their staff and being able to respond to overdoses within the shelter and within the vicinity. And so, um, that was a, an, a change in their service delivery. And so that's how they were initiated as a, an OPS. But, um, the Salvation Army, um, at this time across, uh, the region are not offering witness consumption.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And this is just a personal view of mine and I assume that there is some correlation, although I know there's a lag time in trying to figure out statistically and attribute a cause to something. But my assumption has to be to some degree that because of COVID nineteen and the degree to which people are isolated, has only unfortunately enhanced, uh, the opportunity for people to unfortunately be by themselves when they're ingesting drugs. And so it is a compounding factor in all of this because I believe, um, you know, the, the curves, it's gone up and down and a sudden spike there, it's likely a correlation, uh, between those things. And it brings to mind, uh, uh, an earlier comment, I think it was Counselor Richter, um, maybe it was Counselor Kuntz, but in any event, um, has to do with the fact that if a service being offered, but it generally has, I'll call it office hours, the degree to which this is going to make a substantial difference for those individuals. And looking at all, uh, possibilities, you know, uh, I, I read a lot of literature in a short amount of time trying to wrap my mind around this. And I know philosophically where I'm coming from and that it is something that is a, a huge challenge in our community and we need to do something. And I'm just trying to get the right balance of putting resources where it's going to do the most good. So that's kind of the context of making sure that in addition perhaps to having this and maybe having an OAT practitioner that's situated in this environment so that people can move forward, is also the opportunity to think about these obvious wraparound services that can help people and help to destigmatize. So we make sure that those who can take advantage of those are, are likely not the next individuals that unfortunately will succumb to some toxic drugs.
Yeah, I'll just make a couple of comments, um, Councilor Arnison, about that and maybe Dr. Mahia can follow up with, with that as well. Um, you're right, I think the COVID, um, since March has really disrupted, um, supply chains, it's called, in terms of people procuring safe drugs. And so what we're finding is that it, it has really impacted on individuals getting, you know, safe supplies of their own drugs because people, you know, typically they can't get it how they used to get it. And so that impacts on, you know, that delivery and their, you know, uh, people are doing things, uh, but, you know, mixing drugs, making drugs themselves that they wouldn't normally do. So that has great impact on, on, um, the ability for people to find safe drugs. It also in terms of service delivery because, um, you know, there has been lots of different, um, services that have been impacted by COVID and closing down and opening up and reduce staffing. That also has impacted on the ability of people to reserve, uh, to, to get the services that they, they need. So it has been a, a real significant, um, challenge in that way. Um, the other point I wanted to make is just around, um, you know, the hours of operation for these OPS sites. We have requested in the RFP that they, they do have extended hours and in, in one that we've awarded, um, we'll be working, um, shifting their hours main from late afternoon to early evening. So it's much more accessible for people, not just during daytime hours. So we, we do recognize that there's a, a need to increase accessibility for these services to individuals, not only, um, people who, who, who may, you know, not be working, but also people who may be working and can only get there after hours. So, uh, Dr. Mahia, did you have anything to comment just around the impact of COVID, um, on, on the overdose deaths?
Yeah, um, yes, thank you, Dan. Well, first of all, we are, we are agir, basically, uh, now, um, on, on this pandemic here in Canada. Um, in the, we need to know that at the beginning, when everything was more chaotic than what we eventually saw, uh, a- as we move along, uh, this pandemic, you know, many, many, uh, medical practices that were providing care in the community had to close because they, they didn't have a specific, um, plan to deal with, with COVID, uh, measurements. So, um, I would say that there was about three to four months where it was very difficult for people to have access to appropriate services, whether because, uh, some of them, uh, were closed or were reduced in the amount of time that they were offered, that's one part. And then we need to think about not only, um, some of those services, but also the fact that sometimes, um, the, uh, the mental health stress that has been caused because of this pandemic also adds to all the other, uh, mental health issues that, uh, some individuals in this population have. So it is basically an addition of several, um, situations. And in, in, it is, it is a, a very complex situation. Um, it is unfortunate also that, uh, you know, from the public health perspective, we've been focused on addressing what is urgent and we've let, left behind other things that are critical for us, like for example, the one that we are discussing here. And even though most of the efforts continue to be on, uh, tackling the COVID, um, infection per se, uh, we, we need to make sure that we also address this situation with the overdose deaths.
Thank you very much.
And Councilor Whitmer.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation today. It's a topic that I'm actually somewhat interested in, so I appreciate the information and the context. I do have a couple of questions on the process though, and I, I think my colleagues have covered some of the other issues very well, so I won't spend time on that. But the process to get it open, I'm, I'm interested in that. So what would be the criteria for location? So one of the questions I've raised here, wrote down in my notes is, would proximity to rapid transit be an important factor for locating this facility in the Langleys?
Uh, it's, uh, it's Dan, um, not necessarily, um, I don't think that has, it was a criteria in the RFP that, uh, was requested.
Okay, so like, so, so maybe I'm just gonna, gonna go with that. So the idea though, that this isn't something that's going to be in the community for a short period of time, this would be presumably permanent?
Yes.
Right, presumably permanent, okay. So to me, that would be kind of interesting to locate it, uh, in, in the proximity of rapid transit, uh, where people could access the facility. So maybe I could ask you to look at that again, I don't know why that would be omitted. Now, on the next thing, uh, in terms of land use zoning, um, presumably this isn't a permitted use of any property in the township of Langley. So if you were to determine a location, um, how do you open it without the requisite land use permission?
Well, the, um, the proponent, successful proponent would work with the township or the city, folks in the city to work through those details and, uh, obviously would have to meet all the city, uh, bylaws and requirements for sure. In, uh, in new S Minister, we're going through a process where, with the city currently about a temporary permit that they're going to be, um, providing and they're working through that process. But certainly it would have to be worked quite closely with, with the, the township. Um, if there was a site selected and depending on the zoning, um, the, the service provider would have to work along with, uh, Fraser Health to get the requirements, it wouldn't be just opened up without, uh, that approval from the city or the township.
So can you confirm that if the council did not approve, uh, the update for land use zoning for this permitted use, that you would not proceed to open the facility?
Well, certainly not at that location, would, would have to, you know, rethink of, uh, different locations that may be more permissible. But, but yeah, we certainly want to work with the township, uh, and the city depending on the location, uh, because, you know, we all have to be partners in this. So we wouldn't open it underground, uh, if you will, it, it certainly needs the, the support of the city.
Okay, so I just want to clarify again, so that if, if, if there was a, a site temporarily or supposedly selected from a successful applicant, they obviously not going to have the existing land use, uh, zoning for that use. So that if it was not approved by the council, so I confirm, a hundred percent, that we'd not proceed? Because I think we ran into some of those issues with the supportive housing complex here, uh, where I don't think our, if, if we were to have not supported, and I'm pretty sure it would have proceeded anyway. So I want to get some clarity here, whether we're in the same situation with this facility.
Yeah, no, a permanent site certainly would, would need the support of the, the township for sure.
Okay, thank you.
And could I just ask my colleague, um, Erin, if she had any comments about that?
Sure, yeah, that'd be great, if anybody's got any more information.
Yeah, um, and I think that, um, we are working with the Ministry of Health and the Ministry of Mental Health and Addictions on these various issues. Um, and also that, um, there is where a specific site may not be sort of supported. There are, um, provincial guidelines around offering episodic overdose prevention services. So ensuring that people that who may be at risk of overdose, um, can have a relationship with a healthcare provider to witness consumption wherever that may be. So that may be a very informal sort of environment that's, um, a lot more flexible. And so that, it, it was initially created to support, um, witnessing consumption inside a hospital environment so that people were not leaving against medical advice.
Yes, maybe I could ask a follow-up on that, because that's helpful. So then there, you know, is it, is it works? And again, this is just occurring to me now as a layperson, is it better off to build, for lack of a better term, one large facility to meet this need versus maybe a collection of smaller facilities that are more spread out? Is that a fair question?
I think that's a very, oh, sorry, Dan needs to delegate the question.
No, no, you go ahead, Erin, yep.
Yes, that's a very good question and I think it really depends. I think having, um, varied, uh, locations and varied, um, ways of accessing that's, uh, services. So, um, in being, uh, in my past of providing services, different, uh, individuals, uh, like to access different services in different ways. And so I think that having a site where people know about it and it's transparent and it's, um, visible in some ways that people, um, know of a destination, that that, um, ensures, I think, for some of the folks who are a little bit more hesitant about going into an area and disclosing that they're using substances, that increases some comfort, knowing that they will be treated well with dignity and respect. It creates a welcoming environment. And I think that, um, enhancing the capacity of our healthcare providers to broaden the platform in which they engage and provide service to people, um, that saves their lives is also a really important piece. So I think it's, uh, not an either or, but a both and, Councilor Whitmer.
Okay, thanks, and I, I should, so I'll move on from that, appreciate that. Uh, you mentioned in the presentation, and I, I think anecdotally I remember, that there, there's demonstrated evidence for a decrease in, uh, calls for service to the, to law enforcement, is that? Cause I think we've seen the opposite at our supportive housing complex. Maybe you could, maybe you could highlight some of that again, how that's applies to this use, but we see the opposite at supportive housing.
Erin, do you know the data around that?
Sorry, I'm flipping for the exact statistic, um, and I'm happy to provide you with some of the literature and research. Um, I can email it to you, yeah. Um, and I think that part of the piece is that because, um, you're having trained professionals, um, who are witnessing an overdose, um, so the time period in which, um, an overdose can be witnessed and, um, having good outcomes has significantly decreased, um, with the arrival of fentanyl on the scene. So previously, uh, an, an overdose that involves heroin would be, um, over eighty percent of their, what were witnessed, and they happened over a period of, of hours. With fentanyl, um, overdose onset is quite rapid. And so the, um, potential for brain injury from the lack of oxygen is, is a lot quicker. And so by having an overdose prevention service, you're not having people consume substances behind a locked door in a bathroom, um, at a gas station or a, um, a coffee shop or any of those things. And so people are able to, um, engage in conversation, recognize the overdose and, uh, apply, um, intervention really rapidly. Um, and so then you're often also not calling for, um, nine-one-one, um, emergency response. So you're also able to apply oxygen and different, different things depending on the level of intervention that's slated at specific sites.
Okay, so maybe I'll clarify then. So what you're, what you're referring to is a, is a reduction So what you're, what you're referring to is a, is a reduction in calls of those kinds of, of need for service, community-wide, as opposed to potentially an increase in property crime calls for service in, in direct location to the vicinity of the, of the specific location, which is what we have seen at the, at the new supportive housing complex here in Langley. So you're talking about community-wide, and I was referencing in a very specific area where the facility is located, calls for service go up in that area, which generates backlash potentially.
Sorry, yes, yeah, no. So I think that the other piece is, as Councilor Aaronson had mentioned about the integration of OAT, so opioid agonist treatment into the services, also helps reduce like people's criminal activity if they are needing sort of additional income or to supply and support their addiction. And so what we see is, is often a decrease in calls for service in that way as well, as well as a decrease in property crime. So I can share with you the, the specific literature, particularly around some of the other locations.
Yeah, can you please forward that to all, to our legislative services? Get that to all of council? Because I would definitely want to see that, because that seems to have been the opposite experience we've been having with the supportive housing complex. So I'd like to see that. And next, just to follow up on that, I can think of a number of excellent locations in the city of Langley that perhaps I can forward to you. That would maybe be helpful. I think it would make sense to locate it next to Rapid Transit. So if the facility is of a more permanent nature, it seems to make sense to me to locate it next to Rapid Transit in the municipality that's getting there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Ferguson.
Yes, I think that Councilor Woodward has taken a lot of the questions. I won't repeat them, other than, you know, that something about a, the safe injection site or something similar to it is something that council's going to have a little bit of debate about, as will our citizens. And also the type of community we have, Langley being a community of communities not meshed in one isolated area like the city of Langley, that's where that would make more sense. And I can think of two or three locations as well. So I'll have to touch base with Councilor Woodward and see if we can show some examples. And it'll be up to the city to make decisions, but they've got some excellent locations. Obviously, as, I wanted to point out that I worked with youth, young offenders and young drug alcohol problems. And I did want to say that, you know, whether it's alcohol or drugs or new drugs or past drugs, it's, it's similar issues keep coming up. And I never, ever became an expert or a prophet in solving the problems. It's that many folks that are involved in that industry, you know, there's the users and the people involved with selling it and other things. But the treatment and offering of treatment is one thing for those that want to voluntary. And I'm mostly talking about youth, and those are the people we want, I'd like to reach out to quickly. And those are, and then the non-voluntary, where some provinces are able to take youth and others into treatment that are non-voluntary. Do you have a position on any of those? Or do you have a position on treatment at all, if I may?
In, in terms of voluntary versus non-voluntary?
That's the first one. And also the, the access to treatment, if one's wishing for that from a voluntary point of view as well.
Yeah, so a couple of comments I can make, and then I'll ask any of my colleagues to join in. So in regards to compulsory or, or non-compulsory treatment, I think we, we really want to try to reach people where, where they're at, at the stage of their own recovery. So typically, there isn't anything legally that you can force anybody into treatment, unless it's under the Mental Health Act, which is a whole set of different circumstances. So what we try to do is build relationships with individuals, work with individuals, provide various options for them to, to work on, on their road to recovery. And I think a lot of times it's, it's the availability of a variety of services that they may or may not choose. But I think it's each and every time they have contact with the services, to offer those services up. In regards to referring on to and accessing current treatment services, over the last probably three or so years, Fraser Health has, has reorganized how they access their substance use services. And some of you may have heard of the SUSET team, Substance Use Team, that has a 1-800 number, if you will, that if a physician or someone in one of, let's say the Langley Community Services wanted to refer someone to services, let's say treatment, vetted treatment, they could call this number and make the referral. So it's much more streamlined versus a fragmented system before. And there's regular ongoing improvements to that system of referring into treatment going forward. So not sure if that answers your question, but I'll just ask my colleagues if they had any thing to add to that.
Thank you, Dan. Like I said, having that experience of providing care to this population, not, not in BC, but in Alberta, I can, I, I, I can't say this is going to be exactly the same. But what I can tell you is that when you are offering people a service that is, first of all, is, is professionally provided by someone who understands. And I'm talking about not only physicians, but also other healthcare allies interested in providing the best possible care in an environment where that is, is going to be different in terms of we're going to respect whomever you are, and we're going to meet your needs at whatever point you are. That makes a huge difference for people to open up and be, and, and, you know, be, be more interested in getting help. One of the things that is important to keep in mind is that abstinence is not the only way to resolve this situation. For some people, that might help, but for others, like given the chance for them to have access to what it, what, what we discussed previously, the OIT, those are opioid agonist treatment, that makes a huge difference as well. Because we are not asking them to basically stop using. What we're doing is making sure that we are providing a medication that is going to help with some of the, of, of the issues that could be the root cause of this. Like for example, the pain that is caused by the withdrawal symptoms, how sick they feel when, when they are coming into withdrawal. All those kinds of things are the ones that when you find a team that is willing to help you, where there, there's less stigma about this, there are different options. And we're going to respect whatever decision you want to take, that makes a huge difference. And that's exactly what we want to provide in a service like this.
Yeah, thank you very much indeed. I appreciate everything you, you folks do. I mean, I don't envy your position. I was fortunate enough to stay on the education side and shipped off all the, all these type of problems off those more trained professionals. You know, finding people in a safe environment always made the difference. But, you know, obviously under COVID, alcohol and drug use is up. It's unfortunate, that's the way it is. I wish you well. And certainly, as you know, our position, we're going to be discussing much regarding the safe injection site or a myriad of it. But thank you very much, I wish all of you well.
Thank you very much. I don't see any further questions in council. I want to thank you for coming out. This is the other public health emergency that has tended to take backstage to the COVID public health emergency, and yet it's still a very real. These are our friends and neighbors who are being affected. And I really appreciate the fact that you're moving forward to look for a suitable location. And I, I do, you know, we are the township of Langley, and we'll be talking to the city of Langley also, but we have residents here that could really use that. And I'm not one to ship our problems off to the next municipality. I look forward to hearing more from you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we move on to D2, and that's the Township of Langley Heritage Evaluation System presentation. And I believe Mr. Donald Luxton is here to present. I'll turn it over to Mr. Luxton. There.
Good afternoon, Your Worship.
Hello, Ms. Harx, thank you very much, and welcome here.
Thank you. Before we begin the presentation today, I would like to welcome Don Luxton from Don Luxton and Associates, who is with us to provide you with a presentation on an updated heritage evaluation system for the township. Your Worship, does the consultant have your permission to skip, share his screen?
Yes, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to step in here for a second. I'm just going to edge on the side of caution here, I think for obvious reasons, and declare a conflict of interest, having an interest in multiple properties within a heritage conservation area. I have no idea what's in the presentation or what's being proposed, but I'm going to edge on the side of caution and declare conflict on this. Thank you.
Okay, we'll put you in that conflict room.
So Goal 7 of the Heritage Strategy Implementation Plan endorsed by council in 2012 identified the need for the development of an improved framework for understanding and evaluating Langley's historic resources. The first two steps in the implementation of this goal were realized in the development of a historic context statement and thematic framework endorsed by council in 2017. The third and remaining step is updating the heritage evaluation system used for assessing historic sites for the community heritage register. As part of the Heritage Advisory Committee's 2020 work plan, the committee considered an updated heritage evaluation system that would complete this final step consistent with the foundational work accomplished in 2017. The proposed evaluation system is consistent with the renewed practice and policy framework for heritage conservation in the township and would replace the current criteria when considering future additions to the community heritage register. I will now turn this over to Don Luxton to explain the proposed heritage methodology and criteria in more detail.
There, I think I'm unmuted and, and able to speak. Your Worship, Member of Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this work to you today. This has been a culmination of a series of projects that we have undertaken over a number of years to update the township's heritage program based on best practice and calibrated to Langley's unique heritage resources and context. I would like to thank Elaine Horx, Heritage Planner, and the members of the Heritage Advisory Committee for their assistance with this project and for their very careful review of the work. Our full report is included in your council package. And with your permission, I will undertake a short presentation, which is right here. And if, if technology works, we'll... Screen sharing says it's failed. Ah, I'm hoping you can see this, my first slide. So the work that we have undertaken, as Ms. Horx explained, is the end result of a number of very systematic and very careful steps to update the township's heritage, with the framework of the township's heritage program. I'm trying to, ah, there we go. The township has been involved in heritage conservation initiatives since the late 1970s, has a long history of being a leader in heritage conservation in the, in the province. And through the work that's been undertaken since that time, which has been continuously updated, there's over 200 heritage resources listed on the heritage inventory. And 64 of those sites are listed on the community heritage register. Forty-eight are legally protected, which is an excellent record of the program being effective in identifying, evaluating, and protecting heritage resources. And in order to stay current, as the context, the planning context has changed so much over time, there's been a series of updates of that original program framework. My involvement began with the update of the heritage inventory in 1992, 93. We produced the Heritage Strategy in 2012. And as Ms. Horx mentioned, the, our shared history, the historic context statement thematic framework, was adopted by council in 2017. We also prepared a gap analysis based on all that work to see what resources might have been missed or not identified that would illustrate a much more robust or complete sense of Langley's history. And with this current update of the heritage evaluation system, this becomes one of the first really fully upgraded and holistically considered values-based heritage programs in the province, putting Langley firmly back in the leadership at the provincial level in this area. When we use the term values-based heritage conservation, this has been an evolution that has occurred over time, away from just not thinking of what is old and what is built is important to a much more broad-based understanding of heritage value. It goes beyond just architecture, and it also understands that the values that we ascribe to our heritage sites can mean different things to different people, different cultures, and that we need to think more broadly about what our heritage sites are and what they represent. The existing heritage inventory evaluation system is typical of its time and reveals that it has a bias towards architecture and built heritage, what we call a materials-based approach. And the update that we're proposing moves us more into a values-based system. We've made a lot of progress in getting to that point. Key to that was our shared history and the community consultation that led to that work. It was a, a, a very engaged community that we dealt with. It was a wonderful project to work on and provided us a whole bunch of new information about how to think about Langley's more complete heritage. At the time, we consulted with people in agriculture, people in recreation, et cetera, the arts. We really thought more broadly about what made up the community's history. The gap analysis that we completed in 2019 was not a surprise. We know that our previous evaluation systems bias heavily towards traditional views of history and do not represent in a fulsome way the history and experience of First Nations, of different cultural communities, and women. And as Parks Canada has moved to address those shortfalls in their national historic sites, other communities, including Langley, are now looking at this. And with the our shared history context, we are able to move to a much more robust approach to determining a, a complete, a more complete and much more representative heritage program. The question came up when we were presenting to the Heritage Advisory Committee, how this impacted our treatment of intangible cultural heritage, and specifically First Nations. And there, just to explain very briefly and not get into the detail, the, oops, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead a slide. Not to get into too much detail, I'll be happy to answer questions. But the heritage evaluation that we're proposing relates to moving properties on to the heritage register. Therefore, it has to relate to real property or land-based sites. The challenge in recognizing many First Nations sites is they're generally cultural sites or archaeological. So we address these issues in other ways. It's certainly within our thinking that we will recognize intangible cultural heritage through the historic context. But also, Langley, again, has been a leader in this through that development of the historic context. But also, you've included the concept of heritage in a broader sense in your Arts and Culture Services Plan. And you're undertaking a landmark new initiative with the new museum and cultural complex in Fort Langley, moving forward with interpretation and support of First Nations involvement and recognizing very much an expanded understanding of intangible cultural heritage, which might not be recognized through our traditional heritage program. Our work is all based on our standards and guidelines for the conservation of historic places in Canada, which is our national benchmark for heritage practice. And this now completes an update of Langley's heritage program based on the conservation decision-making process included in the standards and guidelines, understanding of a site, planning for a site, and intervening for a site. This is a linear and holistic process that is recognized across the country as the best model for heritage conservation practice. And you'll see how that system works in this diagram, understanding, planning, and intervening. But at the beginning of this, in understanding a historic place, we would now use the tools that we will have in place to evaluate these sites by adding to what is included in our shared history and our understanding of Langley's history. We would now include an evaluation system that supports this conservation process. The original evaluation system was typical of the time, adopted in 1993, in that it was a numerical system. One of the key reasons that we're moving beyond a numerical system is they tend to be additive, so you have to score a site relatively high in each category, or it doesn't tend to make the cut as part of being included or considered for the heritage register. In this case, as in almost all of the numerical systems that were put in place at the time, architecture scored the most points, up to 45 out of 100, and that provided a bias towards architecture that may or may not recognize other significant heritage values of the site. That, we've moved beyond that to a much more evaluative system. What is being proposed begins with thorough historic research and documentation and understanding of the historic place. Then we can use the tools of the, our shared history to identify the themes and subthemes that the site represents. And we can then compare it against other sites that represent the same themes and subthemes. We've retained elements of both previously used evaluation systems dating back to the 1980s and the 1990s, including the definitions of the criteria and the high, moderate, low ranking, so that we can begin to assess it without actually assigning a number to it. It's no longer additive, so if something scores very high in one of the evaluation criteria categories, that in and of itself is sufficient to consider the site for the heritage register. In addition, we are proposing an integrity threshold, which is once we have determined that a site has heritage value, that we want to know that it possesses integrity, that it has sufficient integrity to convey its heritage value. There's seven aspects to that. It's a very rigorous assessment that needs to be completed for a site being considered and leads to what is called a statement of integrity, which says, or determines whether or not the site does or does not possess sufficient integrity to be considered for the heritage register. We tested this on a number of sites to make sure that we could use this system and that we kind of come up with the same outcome that we would with the old system. And our understanding is that switching to this additive system, which is based also on our experience in a number of other municipalities recently, that we don't have to start over and reevaluate everything. We kind of end up in the same place that we had under the old system. So it really is a kind of status quo moving forward, that we're not going to lose sites that have been considered to have heritage value. But that we may have a different approach or attitude to sites that we have not previously identified or seen as having sufficient heritage value to move on to a heritage register because we saw certain biases built into that system. So really, it starts with kind of a housekeeping and then moves towards a more fulsome system. This is our proposed evaluation form. As you can see, it's pretty straightforward, it's filling in the form. But unlike the numerical assessment forms previously used, it's high, medium, and low. And at the bottom of the right-hand page, you can see there does the resource merit inclusion on the register. We need at least one high, two moderate, or one moderate, and three lows in our ranking based on comparison to other sites. On the left is our integrity criteria, and you can see that it's a very rigorous look at how the site really feels, looks, has survived, and does it convey the sense of heritage value or is it too altered? And we therefore prepare the statement of integrity and summarize whether or not we would consider this worth moving on to the heritage register. So it's based on previous systems, it's an update, and it's intended to move towards values-based assessment for Langley's heritage program. I'll stop there, thank you very much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it, it's an impressive report, and certainly we do value our heritage and the township a lot. I don't see any questions from council, so with that, I'll thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and Ms. Horricks, did you wish to conclude?
Thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to thing three, the Climate Action Strategy, and it's not a presentation for us.
Your worship, would you wish to consider the report that is accompanying or is in relation with the presentation that was done?
You're right, yeah, your worship, I'd like to move the recommendation that was in the, in the report.
Second recommendation.
Yeah. E one, yeah.
I'll just, the clerk is raving, just hold on, everybody, hold on a little bit.
Yeah, it wasn't just a presentation, it was also that the council endorsed it, the system that has just been explained to us.
That would be E one.
I'll just get some verification prepared.
I'm sorry, I just had to put Council Woodward back in the waiting room. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, we just needed to see Council Woodward back. Okay, so with that, we'll go to E one, and Council on moves, E one. Your secretary, Councilor Kunst, discussion counselor, Richter.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just was wondering, and perhaps through you to staff, maybe they could answer, from a, an operational perspective, what kind of an impact is this going to have on A, costs, or B, processing applications?
Mr. Second.
Your worship, we go through this process now, we go through, using the numerical evaluation system. So it would be the same steps, we'd just be using a different method and criteria to do so. That's when somebody asks that their place, their building, their site be considered for the heritage register. That's the process, yeah.
So there'd be no extra costs then to the township or the applicant, would there?
No, there'd be no extra costs. We, if we want to get a heritage evaluation done now, we retain, we have retained Don Luxton and Associates quite a lot, or an alternative consultant. We would do that similarly if someone was to ask in future.
Okay, thank you.
Council Artson.
I, yes, thank you, worship, and just a question, actually, Council Richter has asked a question that I had in terms of costs. I am wondering, and just to clarify, through your worship, to perhaps Ms. Horricks, how is this different, or I don't see anything in this process that triggers something other than an application going forward when staff becomes involved with the design or the outlay or something having to do with a land use? And so it seems to, I mean, I'm entirely in favor of it, but to me, what it doesn't recognize is opportunities for existing preservation when there's no land application in play. So could you just comment that this doesn't change that in any way?
So, so the process for the heritage register, so when we do a heritage assessment, it's done on a particular site. It could be done in conjunction with a land use application, or it could be just stand on its own. This, this, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't change the process that we're already doing, it just changes the criteria we use.
Okay, and just to further clarify then, does that mean that at any given time, somebody in the community can come forward and identify something that currently isn't in the heritage register, make a recommendation, and that could crystallize in an analysis of that particular building spot, grove of trees, or whatever it is, would that be correct?
Yes, that's correct, and that's the process now. So anyone can come forward with these places of interest or of value, and we can have them assessed.
Thank you very much, thank you, it's a great report.
Council on.
Thank you, worship, I just wanted to thank Ms. Horricks and Mr. Luxton for their hard work on this, and the committee. It's, as you can tell from the presentation, it's pretty complex stuff, but actually, at the end of the day, it's not that much difference. It's just a fair, more up-to-date way of evaluating. And it was nice that council pointed out the fact that this is not imposed upon anybody, but it's there to encourage, well, to facilitate people that would apply to be put on the register. But I know that there were several references in there to our thematic theme and other components. So we don't get to tout the Heritage Advisory Committee that much at a council meeting, so those mentions that are in there are certainly interesting for members of council and the public to go on and have a look at the hard work that we've done and putting a lot of the stuff on the internet. And so maybe Ms. Horricks can remind me, and we made a very simple URL that will take the public straight to heritage issues, and I forget what it was. But it's T O L dot C A slash Elaine?
Yes, your worship, it's T O L dot C A forward slash heritage conservation. And that leads you to the conservation page and links you with the historic context statement and framework, the our shared history piece that Don Luxton was referring to and so on.
Yes, there you go, excellent, thanks for that. So it's historic, can you repeat that? I don't know why I haven't had a hard time remembering that.
Sorry, so, so it's called our shared history, a historic context statement and thematic framework for the township.
Yes, but the URL again, I don't know why I can't remember, T O L dot C A slash heritage conservation.
That's correct.
Conservation, yeah. And there is an incredibly powerful online tool for members of council and the public to look at the township and zoom in on historic sites and the whole thematic framework that we've been working on for the last several years. I just wanted to take the time to publicize that. Thanks, Ms. Horricks, and thank you, council. So I hope we support the motion.
Thank you.
You know, for hands up for questions, so I'll call a question, all who's in favor. Any opposed? There is unanimously, wait for Council Woodward to come back in, then we'll move on to D three. So we'll move on to D three, and this is a presentation from staff regarding a climate action strategy. Sorry, I'm going to sort of Mr. Sackey to introduce.
Thank you, your worship. Ms. Rouse and Mr. Schmidt will be doing the presentation, your worship. And as you know, this is a presentation that is in support of staff report based on council's agenda, E two, Climate Action Strategy. So with that, I pass it over to Mr. Schmidt.
Great, thanks, Ryan. So good afternoon, your worship, and members of council. I am Ryan Schmidt, the manager of sustainability, and I am joined by Tess Rouse, our manager of climate action. Tess and I are pleased to be here today to present the results of the public consultation on the climate action strategy and a final strategy for your consideration. So the recommendation provided in the report to council is that council endorse the township of Langley Climate Action Strategy and authorize staff to bring forward related budget requests for council's consideration as part of future year's budgets, complete with an annual progress report. So for the benefit of all of us, but in particular those that are new to this process, people from the public that are just getting involved, and I know there are many, I'd like to take a moment to recap how we arrived here today. And I'm going to go back a few years. It was actually January 29th of 2001, when the council of the time made the township's very first commitment to climate action. And that was by joining the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Partners for Climate Protection Program. The PCP program was a five-milestone program that encouraged participating local governments to measure and reduce their corporate and community greenhouse gas emissions, acknowledging that these emissions posed a threat to our future. That commitment and acknowledgement that came 20 years ago, almost to the day, was the earliest signal to our residents that the township planned to limit its contribution to climate change. Today, the Climate Action Strategy is staff's response to this council's leadership, a climate emergency declaration and adopted emission reduction targets. These targets, 45% by 2030 and 100% by 2050, are based on the best global climate science from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change and align with regional, provincial, and federal targets. A draft strategy was presented to council in July of last year, at which time council directed staff to complete the necessary public consultation. The Climate Action Strategy, as presented, can be considered a playbook, a set of moves that puts us on a path to a healthy, livable, and resilient community. Each individual action will move the township forward and closer to zero carbon by 2050. So just before Tess shares the public feedback with you, I want to highlight something that we feel is worth mentioning. The Climate Action Strategy is not only a path that will lead us to our emission reduction targets, rather, it is a strategy that sets a new vision for our municipality. Because as we roll up our sleeves, lower our fossil fuel use, and decrease our carbon output, we'll notice other things happening, good things. We'll notice clean air and abundant drinking water, healthy, inclusive, and connected communities where residents can walk, bike, or roll to everything they need in their neighborhoods. Wildlife and nature will thrive, and our local businesses, farmers, and agriculture systems will be supported and will be strong and robust. So benefits of the Climate Action Strategy extend beyond environmental ones. And we think that that's a future we can all feel hopeful about. So with that, I will hand it over to Tess to present the public feedback.
Great, thank you, Ryan. So I'd just like to start by just describing the framework of the Climate Action Strategy, and then momentarily we'll provide a summary of the feedback gathered from the public consultation. So as noted by the graphic on the screen, the emission reduction targets are one of the main focuses of the Climate Action Strategy. To meet these targets, staff conducted extensive modeling and public engagement to understand where the township will need to focus actions to achieve these required emission reductions. The five big moves are more specific targets that will put the township on a path toward a resilient and zero-carbon community and corporation. Progress towards both the emission reduction targets and big moves will begin with the implementation of over 140 actions across the eight priority areas. The good news is that many of these actions and initiatives are already things that the township is working towards, but enhanced or accelerated by the Climate Action Strategy. So engagement with the public and township staff on local climate adaptation and mitigation planning actually began in late 2018 and was really used to build the draft strategy and to develop the initial climate action priorities and action pathways for the township. As per council's direction last July, staff conducted public consultation on the draft Climate Action Strategy from September to November 2020. Consultation to date has included engagement with over 6,600 individuals, over 140,000 social media impressions, and 1,649 survey responses. So what exactly did this public consultation look like? Well, prior to 2020, staff were able to hold 37 in-person workshops and four public events with residents, stakeholders, and staff. However, due to COVID-19, public consultation in late 2020 was predominantly digital and included the use of static marketing, both website and social media communications, and 27 digital dialogue sessions and a public survey. The public survey was one of the most engaged with surveys the township has conducted to date, with a total of 1,649 responses. I will note that 60% of survey respondents were township residents, and an additional 30% both lived and worked in the township of Langley, with a diverse spread across all neighborhoods, including rural residences. The Climate Action Survey was available online and via mailed hard copy by request and was promoted through a variety of means, including township township social media channels, newspaper articles, e-newsletters, and stakeholders. Also, to encourage a more equitable response, it was translated into three languages, Chinese, Korean, and Punjabi, and distributed via the Empower Me program and through other community partners. So over the next few slides, I'll just highlight some of the main findings from the public survey. Attachment B in the report package has the statistical results for every question that was asked. So on the screen here, you'll see probably one of the most important questions asked in the survey was regarding respondents' level of support for the Climate Action Strategy, including the targets, actions, and projected investment of a hundred and thirty dollars. Seventy-two percent expressed that they were supportive of the Climate Action Strategy and the required investment. Fifteen percent were neutral, and thirteen percent were unsupported. Eighty-five eighty-five percent of respondents agreed that climate action in general is important for the township of Langley. We also asked respondents which priority areas they felt are the most important, and these were the top three: green space and ecosystems, transportation and mobility, and health and emergency preparedness. After taking a deeper dive into the eight priority areas, respondents were also asked to select which actions were the most important to them. The most popular among survey respondents were enhancement of the multi-use trail system, increasing public transit, recovering energy from waste, promoting sustainable agriculture, actions that supported the retention and expansion of the tree canopy, and actions that addressed long-term water supply. So from the survey alone, respondents left over a thousand individual comments across five open-ended questions. On the screen are a few of those select comments that were captured. Again, attachment B in your report package has a full list of all comments that were received. Staff placed high value on the stakeholder and public feedback gathered throughout the engagement process. In summary, the following changes were made to the Climate Action Strategy: five new actions were added, the language for Big Move Three was adjusted, seven actions were improved and or modified, and twenty-three implementation details were added. As presented to council in June and July of twenty twenty, the Climate Action Strategy has an estimated ten-year financial investment of a hundred and thirty dollars per representative residential household. The changes made to the strategy through public consultation did not change this estimated one-time base increase of a hundred and thirty dollars per representative residential household, which is required to implement the strategy over the next ten years. Attachment E in the report package contains all the actions part of the strategy and also highlights the actions that have been submitted as part of the twenty twenty-one budget process. Moving forward and beginning in twenty twenty-one, staff will submit detailed annual budget submissions submissions for the strategy actions. The total investment for the Climate Action Strategy in twenty twenty-one is fifty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents per representative residential household. However, majority of this investment is being proposed to be funded by a combination of existing budgets, development cost charges, higher surplus, operating revenue, grants and incentives, and the existing Climate Action Reserve Fund. Staff have pursued all funding options available as a way to minimize the financial impacts on township property owners, businesses, and residents. Providing annual financial investment requests via the budget process allows staff to engage with relevant stakeholders to develop the detailed funding strategies needed to implement each action and allows for the consideration of available funding offsets such as grants and incentives. So here in Langley, climate change is impacting us by increases in the frequency and severity of extreme weather events, which result in extreme increased cleanup and remediation costs to the township, but also to damages and financial burdens to local residents and businesses. On the screen, staff have highlighted three isolated storm events to illustrate these financial impacts on the township. As an example, the rainstorm that took place in early twenty twenty resulted in the damage to approximately thirty sites throughout the community. Costs are still ongoing, but to date have surmounted to over one point two million dollars in remediation and cleanup costs. The Federation of Canadian Municipalities and Public Safety Canada estimate that for every dollar invested in mitigation efforts saves three to five in recovery costs. Therefore, the cost of inaction in terms of recovery is expected to be more than four times the cost of taking action today. So I just spoke to the financial cost of inaction, but there are also major health considerations as climate change impacts and community health outcomes are inextricably linked. As recently outlined in the Fraser Health Brief entitled COVID nineteen and the Built Environment, which was sent to council as part of the January fourteenth distribution package, and I quote, "Climate change is a health risk multiplier and is predicted to increase the frequency and intensity of environmental risks in the Fraser Health region, including extreme heat, wildfire smoke, flooding, and air pollution. This is significant for the health of our community as these hazards are associated with infectious diseases like COVID nineteen, lung disease, heart disease, negative effects on brain function, and reduced life expectancy." The brief also noted recent studies have identified that with a twenty percent increase in air pollution, COVID nineteen cases increased by nearly a hundred percent. The B C Center for Disease Control warns that infectious disease vulnerability could be worse in the event of a wildfire smoke, as pictured here on the screen, which is the cause of some of the worst air pollution in Langley and the Metro Vancouver region, and is also a regular summer occurrence. Climate action can reduce our risk of these occurrences and prepare us for a changing climate now and into the future. And with that, I will hand it back to Ryan just to close off our presentation.
So in closing, once again, the recommendation provided in the report to council is that council endorse the Township of Langley Climate Action Strategy and authorize staff to bring forward related budget requests for council's consideration as part of future years' budgets, complete with an annual progress report. So what's important to keep in mind is that although we are estimating the cost to implement the strategy at a hundred and thirty dollars per household annually over the next ten years, approving the strategy today does not automatically approve this budget. And this is since the budget request for all actions will be brought forward in future years for council's consideration for approval. Approving the strategy today simply approves the direction or the playbook that will lead us to council's target of zero carbon by twenty fifty. Which brings us to the end of the presentation, and at this point, I'll hand it back over to you, Your Worship.
Very much. So this time, any questions of staff regarding the report? The presentation, I'll start with Counselor Long.
Oh, I I don't have any questions. I just sort of, I do have a bit of a statement. I think it was.
So we'll wait for the motion for that, but if anybody has any questions right now.
I would like to be on the list to make the motion, Your Worship, because I was on council in twenty two thousand and one when we joined the FCM.
Okay, okay. I'll move down to Counselor Woodward.
Well, Your Worship, actually, I do have a question for staff. And and this would probably come up once the motion's been made, because it's gonna, I'm asking about funding. So the 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 report talks about other funding opportunities, and the last comment made by staff was, hey, we're not approving, you know, the actual actual budget today because there's still work to be done. And the report talks about grant funding. So as I said, I'd like to make the motion because of the FCM involvement, but FCM also provides some grants, as do others. So have staff fully investigated the funding opportunities and in terms of grants? Perhaps they're waiting for this report to be approved before they go after that, but that's the question I have. There is some assistance out there, lots of it, in in terms of grant funding, I believe.
Thank you. Turn it over to staff.
Tess Rouse, thanks, Counselor Long. Yeah, so for twenty twenty-one, staff have looked at grant and incentive opportunities that would meet the requirements of the actions that we're proposing to go forth within twenty twenty-one. However, as I'm sure you are aware, grants and incentives can come up all year long. And so some of the investments that we're looking to make would also be needed to match existing grants that may come to fruition in the twenty twenty-one cycle. But staff are committed to continuing to explore the grants and incentives that do become available in twenty twenty-one as well as in future years.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, staff. So that's something I'll bring up again when the motion's on the table. There's, when we embark upon this initiative, which we've already actually done, but if we can follow through, it opens up some doors to some assistance.
Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of questions, but before I go, I just, in the context of any questions I have, I just want to say I generally support, obviously support the Climate Action Strategy overall. I think it's a pretty good framework. I think it's missing a few things, but I think quibbling about some of the details, I think it's good to just get this to get this done. I think, but I do have a couple of questions. The main one is around cost, of course. I've been sort of bringing this up since the beginning, when we declared the climate emergency. And, you know, you know, five to six million a year for ten years is a pretty significant. So how how is it that we sort of embrace the strategy yet aren't pre-committing to that kind of an expenditure? I'm still struggling with, you know, yes, we can adopt this document, but I guess, of course, we're free to ignore it in future years. Is that kind of the rationale? Where we're now going to be discussing, you know, five to six million dollars per additional spending? How do I reconcile that I'm not automatically endorsing that for every budget coming up, yet still endorse this document? Somebody, Mr. Backen, can help me with how that might look in future years.
Backen.
I can't, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear it, unfortunately.
There we go. No, thank you. The the challenge that you've outlined is that even if we adopt the strategy in its in total, unless we were to agree to its funding in the budget year in particular, we have no way in future of actually committing future councils to funding any initiative. Council's discretion is unfettered going forward. Now, the provision of a framework and a multi-year expenditure generally helps persuade the issue, but ultimately, other than funding the entire matter in one year, there is no no way of prohibiting it from being reviewed or revisited or considered in the context of other other budget priorities.
Yeah, so I think I understand that that it'll be, this is a framework, and it'll be either funded or not funded. I think for me, I think as a layperson, sort of, you know, wondering, you know, we have a lot of strategy documents that sound great, but if they're not funded, they don't amount to much. And, you know, here, you know, quibbling about some of the tables and some of the timeframes, I did have a couple of questions around that. There was some of the rationale, for example, on waiting three to four years for something versus doing it right away. I don't need to belabor every line item, but I'm wondering if the staff that worked on it can can outline for me some of the rationale when I read these tables, what the timelines were, what the criteria were to put, say, five years on something and one year on something else.
Go ahead, staff.
Hi, Counselor Woodward, this is Tess Rouse. Thanks for your question. So when staff met with internal stakeholders to review the action list, the timeframe for implementing was discussed at length. Some actions, as an example, I would say would not be appropriate to move forward. There's a lot of stuff around parking regulations, things like that, that just aren't feasible right now in Langley, but maybe in future years. Also, some actions would require studies or very detailed plans before actually implementing, let's say, capital upgrades in corporate facilities. But definitely, the strategy is meant to be modular and adaptable. So if there's specific items that staff feel should should be moved up in priority, that's something that can be considered. We've also taken into account the the modeling that in terms to meet those emission reduction targets in twenty thirty and twenty fifty. And we've timed out those actions as to, you know, if they're policy-based versus infrastructure-based, when they're to come into play in order to put us on that path to meeting to meeting those targets.
Okay, so I think that highlighted it perfectly, Mr. Mayor. I think what I was going to raise, actually, you know, five, you know, number of years until we look at parking requirements is something actually I I tweaked on specifically as why that wouldn't start now. So it's interesting to see that there's, you know, maybe a lot more rationale to some of these some of these timetables than than I would be aware of. Hopefully, if council wants to consider speeding up or changing, that would also be considered, not just the staff perspective. So I I think that for me, I I'm going to leave the rest of my comments until we discuss it. But overall, I'm pretty excited to move forward with this document. No document this size and complexity is going to be perfect, and I look forward to making a number of revisions to it, even potentially at the next council. Thanks.
Counselor Marsh.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the report. It's a very lengthy document and lots of material in there, and lots of good work that's gone into it. I'm certainly very supportive of moving forward with a climate action strategy. But my my questions, my question is is around the what we're doing now versus what is to come. And I I earlier in the presentation, it was mentioned that we, you know, we're good news is we're already doing lots of these things. And what I can't seem to separate when I read through the document is really understanding what it is that we're doing currently and what it is that if we didn't, for example, if we didn't decide to adopt this Climate Action Strategy, what would we continue to do and what would we then miss out on? And I I'm having trouble making that distinction of what we're adding by adopting a strategy like this compared to what we're already doing. And that, it it's sort of all, for me anyways, it's all kind of mixed together, all the things we want to do, but I don't have a real good grasp of what we're doing compared to what we will do. So I don't know if there's a comment from staff on sort of that of how we, what we're doing right now versus what we're not. And maybe there's a table that that could be referred to that would indicate what we, what this Climate Action Strategy adoption really does for us compared to what we're already doing. It would just be helpful for that clarification.
Hi, Counselor Whitmarsh, it's Tess here again. Thank you for the question. Great, great points. I think that the Climate Action Strategy really provides that larger strategy framework and document that really does need endorsement in order to even continue some of the actions that may have historically been occurring here in the township, but also to also accelerate some of them and enhance them, again, to meet those targets as adopted by council. We do have more details on those specific actions, if you'd like a breakdown of actions that are existing versus new or modified or accelerated due to the Climate Action Strategy, and we can we can absolutely provide that if it helps to provide some clarity around those actions.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, that's helpful to know, and maybe we maybe don't need it necessarily today. I'm not sure. But, you know, it talks about implementing the strategy over a ten-year period. And I guess for me, it would be helpful to see what the next ten years looks like, what gets laid out from one year to the next, what the the plan is. And I recognize that it's coming back to council for for specific budget approval annually or any new 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 projects. But it would be interesting to know, what does the ten years look like, and how does it how does it unfold over the ten-year period? What are we doing today and what happens over ten years? How is a hundred and thirty dollars being used, and how do we show that? And I know it's hard to, you know, we're not guaranteeing it, but if there's some sort of prediction as to this is sort of what we're planning, how it's going to be laid out over ten years. And I'm having trouble seeing that when I read through it, and maybe it's just that there's so much information I'm missing it. But that would be helpful for me, a ten-year layout in a table or a document as to how we're transitioning from now to then and what it looks like ten years from now compared to today.
Counselor Whitmarsh, it's Tess Rouse. If I could just make one comment to that. I would say, you know, really to focus on on the big moves, those are the on-the-ground changes that we should expect to see by twenty thirty. So safe and sustainable transportation, meaning half of current passenger vehicles, trips that are currently being made would be transitioned over to sustainable modes like bikes, EVs, transit, zero emission, new buildings, zero emission, existing buildings. That is really the vision that Ryan spoke to earlier, that we have modeled and project that the, you know, investment in the hundred and forty actions can achieve, if that helps any more clarification on the around that vision and what what this will look like in twenty thirty.
Yeah, no, I think it's, yeah, I mean, I think that's helpful for me, but, you know, just as an example, I look at number five, resilient natural systems, increased tree canopy and rainwater capture from current levels. So maybe there's more detail about where we are currently and and what how much we expect to capture. That's probably in here somewhere. But, you know, like, right now, we already, we have a, you know, a tree protection bylaw advisory. But, you know, like right now, we already, we have a, you know, a, a tree protection bylaw advisory committee that's now starting to develop documents around the idea of tree canopy and, and enhancing tree canopy in Langley Township. So it seems like, you know, already having that discussion, and I guess that's obviously tied to this. But, you know, i- if we weren't to endorse this strategy, are we still going to try to increase trees, tree canopy, just as a specific example? Or does that mean tree canopy is dead because we don't decide to adopt this strategy? So that's the link that I'm, I'm just getting towards. I'm just not sure what we get for adopting it and what we don't get if we don't adopt it. So that's where I'm struggling a little bit. But I, I appreciate there's so much material here and a lot of work's gone into it.
Your worship, may I provide just a very quick comment that might be beneficial? It is something that has been referenced before by members of council. And having a strategy through you to Councilor Whitmarsh, having a strategy adopted by council really assess not just staff, but the public, developers, anyone who does business in County of Langley, with this lens, if you will, through which look at different, different applications, different projects, different proposals. So it, it, while it provides a commitment, it is not necessarily a financial commitment. It's a commitment for us to do things differently, to be able to view things differently and, and, and work together with understanding that the council has made this commitment. Not necessarily in a financial sense, because goals vary from year to year depending how well we might be doing. What staff has tried to do is provide council with as good of an estimate as possible as to the cost over the long term. But it doesn't mean that in a given year, there may be no, no need for any financial contributions or financial budget discussions because we've done so well in the previous years. So I hope that that helps. It's really allowing staff and the public, developers included, when we do things, to be able to take a look at how does this fit within the sustainability strategy and the climate action strategy, sorry, sustainability charter and the climate action strategy.
Great, that, that's good for me. Thank, thank you. Very much, that's helpful. Very much, Ramon. Appreciate it. Mr. Sepe.
Counselor Goodst.
Yeah, thank you to staff for bringing this very comprehensive strategy. I can just imagine all the public feedback that I've kind of looked at a lot of the comments. So, yeah, thank you so much. And also for getting it translated into three different languages. So, so many of our people in Langley who are, speak another language can participate. I had a question about, on page eight, it shows sort of how the hundred and thirty dollars would be, you know, potentially distributed. And I know it's very high level. And seven dollars, just for an example, seven dollars for agriculture. What does that say specifically, or in generally? Would that seven dollars sort of indicate, like, how would that be spent on what part of agriculture? It's a huge, you know, part of our community. And I was just wondering, you know, how that would sort of help with sustainable agriculture in our community? Or what that investment looks like.
Councilor Kents, it's Tess Rose here. Appreciate your question. So in the agricultural priority area, there are a number of actions. One in particular that will require some investment is a current program that was piloted by our community, community policy and planning folks, which is the Ecological Services Initiative, which really enhances repair and health and other ecological features on farm properties. As you know, the township wouldn't necessarily have jurisdiction over those. But again, our environment and our ecosystem work as one. And so it's really in investing and working in partnership with those, those farmers to ensure that we're protecting and enhancing those very sensitive ecological areas through incentives and upgrades to, to those areas. So that's an example of, of one, as well as working, you know, to, with partners in that space to educate them on sustainable farm management practices.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all your.
Counselor Ferguson.
Oh, yeah, there's certainly going to be an awful lot of discussion on this. This is great. How can you say, how can you not support this? I mean, we'll have to find the money, resources, and there'll be lots, lots of dialogue. Certainly, Tess and Ryan, thank you for your presentation today. You know, if any, if, if people, if the contractor forgets to take my garbage, I always phone Ryan up and he comes down and picks it up with his truck. But anyway, I did want to ask them, given, given the information. Now, you're talking about construction. I was just wondering from a zero, if you want to build a zero-carbon house or whatever, the zero-emission house, do you, could people contact you or your staff? And you can give, provide them with information on who to contact on or how to do it, if I may through the chair?
Tess here, just to speak to your comment. Absolutely, we have great staff that work at the township in our permits licensing and inspection services that really focus on the greening of community buildings and work actually already with builders and developers on really trying to green their development proposals in the buildings that, that they are building here in our community. If residents have questions as well, our staff are always willing to share resources. There's lots of great information out there for people who are looking to build their own homes, as well as we're hoping as part of the climate action strategy to really ramp up our education on green buildings to the general public so that they can realize what the benefits are of building to a higher energy efficiency and a lower, lower carbon footprint.
Yeah, okay, on another thing, how can you, I, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I live in an area where our power goes out quite a bit because there's a lot of trees around it. We also see the winds come up. We also see water levels go back up and down. My neighbor's lake, it is really high right now, super high. But then in summertime, it goes down. Depending on the summer, it depends on how far it goes with the water table. So there's all sorts of things that go on, and we're seeing more of that, the high, the high rains and other things. So I was wondering if I have a kind of a loaded question to you. Would that be normal meteorological events? Or those are things subject to climate action, if I may through either Ryan or Tess?
Thanks, Councilor Ferguson. So, yeah, it sounds like you're experiencing some of the impacts of climate change right there in your own backyard. Absolutely. We, we live in a rainy province. You know, there is going to always be some normalcy of flooding or wind events. But we are currently, as staff, really trying to work with our internal teams to really track those more extreme weather events and really isolate them to understand what the trends are. All the research out there from Public Safety Canada, as well as even FCM, shows that extreme weather events, which are caused by climate change and are not just regular weather events, really are ramping up and the costs to those damages, like you've said, trees falling, flooding are increasing as well.
Thank you.
Just very, there's been a lot said, and I think it's like eating oatmeal. I think it's just the right thing to do. We need to move this along. I think as a position on the council, we, we do need to, to see some of the things unfold about how cost and how we're going to afford it and, and move along that way. But I think we need to do it. I, I, I've been in Langley all my life, and I can remember fifty, fifty-five years ago, and I'm sounding like my dad, we used to get snowstorms, and they were, they were two and a half feet quite often. And today, when we get a rain event, you had mentioned a rain event. We get way higher rain events than what they predict. So there is, we need, and I'm, I'm not just saying it stops there. But let's, let's call the question, let's get on with it. I think it's, it's what we need to do. Thank you. And thank you, Tess and Ryan, for having us, and you've done some good work. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, your worship. I sometimes struggle to come up with a question. This case, I'm so unreservedly in favor of the report and moving it forward. But so I'm challenged to come up with anything that occurs to me that could be questionable about it. But I was wondering if perhaps, through your worship, to maybe Tess or Mr. Schmidt, maybe you could articulate something that I think was woven into the report, but it couldn't be more critical, I think, in terms of our discussion about the economics of the situation, which would be, from my perspective, the symbiosis between what we would be doing and other levels of government that would help to support. So not only just what our local actions are, but how other efforts are being coordinated from a financial point of view, you know, to help local governments to achieve their targets. Thank you.
Yeah, you, you definitely have pointed out some recent alignment. I'd say in the last year to two years, we've probably never seen this cohesion around climate action from the local government to regional, provincial, and federal level. So right now, really, we're at this precipice of, you know, instrumental amounts of investment being, being really poured out through grants and incentives and new programs at, at all three of those levels, as well as the ability to really partner and collaborate with not only local governments, but also our regional government as well on, on some of these really big initiatives. Now that all of our big moves and emission reduction targets are aligned, we're not all reinventing the wheel. We're really coming together to realize those cost efficiencies and have a much larger reach. As you know, residents don't necessarily see those, those residential municipal boundaries all the time. So it's great to have that consistency across our region with everyone moving forward on that.
Are you muted? Counselor. You're muted.
Too early, yeah. I, I, I just want to quote some TV character who says, "Just get her done." Thank you.
I see no further questions of staff. I want to thank them for the report and the presentation. It's really interesting to know that twenty years ago, which is a generation, and a lot of our delegates weren't even born twenty years ago. But we've, we've been on this path for a long time. And maybe it's been called something different in years past, but certainly we're moving forward. And I know twenty years from now, there might be a member of council who'll say, "Hey, I want to move this report because I remember what happened in two thousand and twenty-one." But that probably won't be me. But thank you very much. Great report. And it's certainly continuing the work that we're doing. A lot of things that we're already doing are in the report. I think this is a good way to, to bring it all together in, in one strategy so that we can be clear on where we're going in the future. So again, to Ms. Ruse and Mr. Schmidt, thank you very much for your very comprehensive presentation on the report. So I'll go to Counselor Long, who I think is itching to move E two.
Yes, thank you, your worship, because on January the twenty-ninth, two thousand and one, Counselor Kaczynski made a motion that I seconded, that whereas a global reduction in emissions of greenhouse gases is necessary to protect against climate change and possible adverse effects on human health, the physical environment, economy, and quality of life. So the motion was made that we would participate in the Partners for Climate Protection Program with the FCM. So with that background, I would move the recommendation that takes us on the next pathway towards trying to do our part and saving the planet. So I'll move the recommendation.
Counselor Davis has a great opportunity for questions. Is there any discussion? Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, no, I just won't belabor the point and we can get on with the rest of the agenda. I just want, I can't, anyone here voting this is unanimous vote. Anyone here is opposed to trying to do something about climate change? I certainly am in support of it, while I've got some concerns about funding it over the next, how that's going to get done and how we're going to be paying low taxes while we do that. I look forward to taking on those challenges in future years. But overall, I think the document's a good one and I support it. Thank you.
This is a living document. In order to gain the expected, because I'm thinking back twenty years, we didn't have an hour as we have today. And I'm sure as time goes on, we're going to be getting new learning. So this document will be, the document's council will always be involved. Thank you for that. I see no further debates or questions. Someone call the question. All those in favor? And opposed carries unanimously. I can hear the applause coming from. We've been at this for two hours and forty-five minutes. I know we'd like to, I don't want to go, but if you'd like to stretch, why don't we break for about a five-minute stretch, come back? At, I've got three, almost three forty-five, so come back at three fifty. Just have a little bit of a stretch. All right, welcome back. Just, everyone just put the cameras on so staff know who's present at the meeting. It'd be helpful. Speaking for Counselor Davis and Whitmarsh and Goodst. Arnison, I know there. Counselor Goodst, are you?
That wasn't. Long enough, see the mouth.
Yeah, we're all, we are all present. Thank you very much. You're reading the meeting. And so we'll move on to E three. This is private driver's policy update. There's a motion to endorse the amendments. Counselor Woodward moves it, secondary. Counselor Ferguson, and any discussion, questions? Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, again, I won't belabor it. Just get on with the agenda, but I want to thank staff for getting this done. It's not perfect, but I'll take what I can get here. I really appreciate the work that's gone into this and let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed carries unanimously. Thank you. Move on to E four. This is council policy, permissive exemptions from property taxes. This is a report, a motion to recede.
I move receipt, Mr. Mayor.
Is that E? Is that E three?
E four, E four. We're on E four. So it's been moved to seconders. Counselor Long seconds it. Any discussion? See, now I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Worship, worship, I was not seconding it.
Oh, okay, I saw your hand.
No, I, I put my hand up forward, so I needed it for, so, no, I'm not seconding that one.
Okay, sorry. So who's seconding it? I need a seconder. I'll second it. Second by, Mayor Fros. All right, Counselor Whitmarsh, you have something to say.
Yeah, just, just, I wanted to clarify and make sure that we understand that this is.
Mr. Mayor, could people who are not speaking close their mics off?
Yes, there's a lot of open mics. Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, Counselor Whitmarsh, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify and make sure that we are here just receiving the report from staff. We are not acting on any kind of recommendation. We're not acting on a motion. We're just receiving the docu, the, the material that staff did, the staff report.
Is that, is that? Thank you. That's correct. It's just received. We asked staff to provide this. They did. And he just needs to.
Okay, thank you.
Push a motion to receive it. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed?
For receipt.
Receipt carries unanimously. Thank you.
I'm opposed to recede. Not very often you can oppose a receipt, but I didn't have.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Long's opposed.
Thank you.
It's been noted, thank you. And we move on to files for first, second, and third reading. And G one is highway closure dedication removal on disposal, two, two, four, two, four, Frisa Highway.
So move Ferguson. Second by Davis.
Second by Counselor Davis. Counselor Whitmarsh, you handed this up. Thank you. I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries. Thank you. Okay, so we move on to items from prior meetings. Counselor Long has placed on the agenda a motion to reconsider. And I believe, is, oh, is there a debate on votes? No, it's no debate. So it needs to be moved and seconded and then a vote.
I'm over.
Okay, is there a seconder? And I don't see any seconder.
What?
So we will move on. We move on to files for consideration at third reading. And we begin, the only one on here is I one, and it's the non-medical cannabis retail sales development applications. And we begin, and the only one on here is I one. It's the non-medical cannabis retail sales development applications. Uh, so I'm gonna do a preamble. I'm asking Mr. Backen, Mr. Sethi to do a bit of a preamble just on the process. Uh, so up to this point, um, we received in the neighborhood of twenty applications. Uh, and uh, council went through a process, had a workshop, went through um, the first and second readings and then deferred uh, some to this uh, day when we can uh, take a look at all of them that uh, do get moved forward. So here we are today with, with these under five. And uh, they're here for third reading. So we'll go through each bylaw independently. And move second and then debate on it and vote from there. Mr. Backen, did you want to provide any further commentary on?
Uh, thank you, Worship. Just a, a quick update then. Uh, the bylaws before you have been referred by council to the session with the exception of fifty-six, sixty-six, which is sixty-two, twenty-five, two hundred street. That received um, its public hearing at the last meeting, so it's on the agenda for third reading, but is not something council has previously considered for referral. It can be dealt with at this meeting. As well, there was one other outstanding application uh, that um, was in the vicinity of seventy-second and two oh eight street. That application his, does not appear to be proceeding. Uh, no action have been taken on that in regards to signage or moving the application along. So we believe these are the um, the current applications at the moment with uh, what you have before you, which is uh, four that have been referred and one that's awaiting disposition that can be dealt with as with uh, with the previous applications. Mr. Sethi, anything to add?
Uh, no, that's it. If uh, if you wish, Your Worship, I do have a map to show geographically the location of these.
Yes, thank you. And I saw that it was in the distribution, so uh, if you wanna put it up, maybe you can just point out for council.
Just in the meantime, Mr. Mayor, I just, I will have a process issue regarding
Yes, yeah, I do. I've got, I'll, I'll, I'm just, um, I'll have you on the list. Thank you. Before we go to the bylaws. Thanks.
Thank you.
So, okay, so that map is a little bit hard for us to see, or maybe on my other screen it'll be better. But I'll just direct council's attention to the distribution list. There was that map in there. Uh, that was uh, on page, on page twenty. Uh, we've got last, there, the last distribution that we received. So that, so it kinda gives a picture of where they are.
Are you able to stay in your worship?
Sorry, sorry.
Are you able to see the map?
Yes, I am. Yeah, thank you. That was good. Okay, is there any else? Is this second?
No, that's it, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have, uh, on Counselor Richter and Counselor Woodward. Counselor.
Uh, yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I'm, first of all, I wanted to go through these one by one, so I'd like to request division.
Uh, we are going to go through each one independently.
Okay.
It won't be one. It will be each one.
And I wanna confirm that this is it. We've only got one, two, three, four, five in front of us today? For third, that's it?
That's, that's, yes, that's all the ones that have been referred and the one, that's Mr. Backen. So these are the ones.
Okay, so when we address each one, like for example, the first one there that's on the list, fifty-six, thirty. Is that the one that's in by the Harley Davidson shop up in, up by highway one?
Yeah, we'll go through the address of each one when I read it, but that's uh, eighty, yes, yes, it is. Uh, eighty-sixty-two oh one street.
Okay, okay. And fifty-six, fifty-one, the next one, it, that's in Fort Langley?
That's Fort Langley, yeah. Ninety-one oh three lover.
And fifty-six, fifty-four, that's the one in Walnut Grove?
Two oh three, four nine, eighty-eight Avenue.
That's the Walnut Grove one?
Yes.
Okay. And then um, fifty-six, sixty-four, that's the Alder Grove one, right?
Yes, three, two, two, seven, two, sixty-four.
Okay, and then five, six, 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 that's the one that has not had um, a third reading. We haven't referred it or deferred it or discussed it or anything.
That's falling off the uh, public hearing last week.
Okay, thank, uh, thank you now. I did have a question. Wasn't there some sort of land use um, contract that had to be amended? Was it in connection to any of these that are in front of us?
Mr. Backen.
Um, that, that's correct, Your Worship. Sixty-two, twenty-five, two hundred street is presently under a land use contract, so that's the one that's uh, referenced as being amended.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, I said a couple, one, two points, Mr. Mayor. One is of course the uh, Fort Langley location I will not just consider, debate or discuss, and nor have I. So I'd like that to be maybe put at the end or the beginning, whatever you, whatever you'd like to do there. That, if that's all right. I also though, would like to consider whether you'd entertain a, a referral motion for all of them together back to staff. Uh, before we itemize and vote on each one individually, I would like to make a referral motion of all applications. But of course, I would need some advice from Mr. Backen on how to potentially do that, given that I'm in conflict on only one of the particular bylaws.
Okay, so uh, a referral motion, certainly, I'll just step in for Mr. Backen. And I want to comment on the conflict. That's something you'll help with. A referral motion is always in order, uh, certainly, uh, for a reason, if the United States staff knew what the reason was, but that's always in order if you wish to make that a seconder then.
Yes, so I, I don't know if I should be excluding the Fort Langley location from that referral motion, Mr. Mayor, maybe Mr. Backen can advise.
Backen.
Uh, Your Worship, if you're going down the right path, the question about the referral is, is that actually taking any substantive action on the item? And how comfortable does a council member feel about so doing? Um, the, the short answer is, some would consider a referral not to be something that requires or, or causes a conflict because it's simply a referral back to staff. Others may wish to err on the side of caution and say that was the case. If one was to be simply eliminating risk, then it would be to refer the four and declare the conflict on the fifth. Uh, however, again, if it's not substantively viewed as being a conflict because it's merely a referral, it would also be in order to refer all five.
Okay, so I mean, given the current political environment in the town of Langley, I'm gonna edge on the side of caution uh, in each and every case. So um, I think I would like to make that referral motion on the four and then I'll leave the other that I'm in conflict on for, for council's consideration.
And
Well, I'll take that whenever you're ready to take that, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Be appropriate now, but it would be helpful if you're moving on to tell staff what you're, why you're referring it.
Yep, so I would like to refer back to staff for a report uh, on uh, these, tho- those, those applicable for, or I think maybe five, I'm not sure. It includes seventy-second within that. A report on why city of Surrey and city of Langley and other municipalities uh, nearby in the region have not proceeded to consider non-medical cannabis retail prior to considering cannabis retail applications any further. Like, I'll speak to that and explain it if I'm there.
Sure, thank you. Is there a seconder?
I'll second it for discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So Counselor Woodward, you have to speak there.
Yeah, so I appreciate that for discussion. I mean, I'm quite willing to accept, so I'm like, paid on this one. I'm a little, you know, as I've uh, read all these submissions and then, then there's been so many, you know, the quantity of submissions is significant. Uh, we've got, from what I perceive, members of the public, proponents organizing against each other, uh, and so on and so forth, and it's been challenging to sort that out. But one thing that's come to my mind is some really good feedback on uh, some of the law enforcement and uh, ancillary concerns around cannabis retail. And I, and I've grown over the last few, three weeks, two, three weeks, increasingly concerned about the potential ramifications of us hosting cannabis retail while, uh, you know, the six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand behemoths to the east, to the west uh, does not. And then the city of Langley, of course, will not. And, and I don't want necessarily the town of Langley to turn into a cannabis retail destination for, you know, six, seven hundred thousand people. So I wanted to get some more information on why uh, the city of Langley and the city of Surrey and other municipalities such as maybe Maple Ridge and others that i- if and have, they have said no to cannabis retail, why they have done so? And what concerns are they having that maybe we haven't been brought to our attention uh, through this process? A process which I've been very clear is flawed uh, in so many ways. Um, I don't see that as a significant delay. I think that can be done pretty quickly. But I haven't heard much from the RCMP uh, in, in the town of Langley. I haven't heard much from law enforcement professionals in a more of a formal capacity in terms of a staff report. And I'm growing, growing increasingly concerned that, that we're gonna accept cannabis retail, uh, why our very large neighbor does not. And, and I wanna know why they have not. And that's the rationale. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you simply voted against it. Counselor Long, go ahead.
Yeah, well, here we are seconding a motion that, you know, I guess we're finding out what's going on. I would have liked to have spoken to other issues in, in regards. But I mean, the time to, to have discussed whether we should be embarking down this road was a year or two ago. Uh, and, and you know, we've had a lot of criticism about the policy and process that we're following. And certainly, nothing can be perfect. But uh, as I've said on, on other occasions, I guess there's a time by which one should be trying to address the concerns that one has. And in this particular case, would have been when we, when this particular, when this council approved the policy uh, that we're trying to follow, even though it's, I've always called them guidelines, because we, we accept some and we don't accept others. Uh, and I would, I would like to speak to that at some point too, which is the reason that I brought that reconsideration for it, because some of the policies that we've agreed to, you know, may be interpreted in different ways by different councils, and I certainly interpret differently now, having known what we've known. But it doesn't uh, to me, it makes sense to say, well, you know, we need to find out why another community's doing this and any other thing. This, a decision to go down this, and, and actually the council that seconded this particular motion here for referral was quite uh, adamant in, in, in us going down this road, from what I recall, perhaps I'm wrong, uh, that we knew
Mr. Mayor, can you please ask Counselor Long to stay on topic and stop picking fights?
I'm not. Okay, thank you. Uh, Counsel, Counsel Long, Counselor Rick, that was saying, if there's a point of order, so if you just carry on with your, without
Very important, I think, Your Worship, to understand the dynamics that are at play here. So if we decided at some point, i- 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 in, in that counsel, Woodward is saying, well, he's becoming increasingly concerned. Well, this council was really gung ho, okay, to, to move in, in this direction. It's a legalized product. And uh, done our best, I believe, to get down a very, very difficult road to where we are today. And I think to refer it or delay it any further isn't going to solve perhaps what it is we're trying to get at here, and I don't even know what that really is. Uh, Surrey does things for very many reasons and other, and each community does what they have to do for whatever reason that they do it. I don't think that, that, that at this particular juncture where we have come down such a difficult time to get to where we are today, that referring it is going to, gonna provide anything more than, I don't, I really don't know what it's gonna provide, quite frankly. Uh, maybe Counselor Woodward should phone a few counselors on the, on the, on the council of Surrey. They're very approachable, I'm sure, and ask them their opinion, but you're gonna get an opinion, I guess, from anybody. Uh, it's gonna have their own reasons to support and not support. I personally don't support as many as, as we, as we put forward here, but I think it is, it's a process that we need to get on with and get over with. And uh, move on to uh, other more important issues in my mind. So I, I cannot see any purpose or any uh, thing good coming out of a referral delay. In fact, I don't even know how staff could possibly even answer that question. Why did Surrey do what it did? I, I don't know. Staff are gonna phone up the clerk and say, why'd you guys do what you do? I bet you a lot of people wonder why we do what we do. So anyway, I don't, I don't support it. Thank you.
Counselor Goodst.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm in support of a referral. Um, I'll tell you why I'm, you know, why we went down this road for me personally. Um, when we first start, started having these discussions. Um, the community said, you know what? We want you guys to look at this. Um, it's legal. Um, quit getting your, you know, get your, your head out of the sand, you know, people are using, they're buying it from the black market. You know, we need to neutralize the black market. Um, uh, so like for me, there's, there's a lot of reasons. Um, we entertained, what, twenty-one applications? Um, we initially said that we would possibly look at one for each community. Actually, I don't think that, you know, that's gonna happen. Um, I did a lot of research the other day. I spent a couple hours, um, you know, looking at that very thing, like why Surrey, why not? Um, you know, but there's actually, uh, there's a website I went to where um, they, they did it by population. So population from ten thousand to about a hundred thousand and uh, communities like Victoria Salmon Arm, Crown Brook, Parksville, Vernon, Williams Lake, all um, you know, under a hundred thousand. Um, most have two to three to four um, retail cannabis locations. Uh, Vernon has fourteen. Um, we're entertaining maybe four or five, maybe two. Uh, I'm not sure where everyone's at with that. So I'm comfortable that we're not doing something completely, you know, off the, the deep end here. Um, other communities already have had this process. I looked into their process. Um, you know, it's not that different than ours. They probably also had, it was a bit murky and um, I agree, it's been a, a bit of a murky process, but um, it is our job to sort of wade through the mud and, you know, come up with something that works. And um, hopefully we can sort of, you know, reevaluate and uh, have something that is maybe a little bit more um, user-friendly, I suppose, if that's the word you wanna use. But I do feel that we are in line with other communities and um, you know, I'm not gonna be supporting the referral. I think um, these businesses need to have some confidence in, in what we're doing. And I don't think, um, you know, I think we just need to, to move on, get on with it.
All right. Counselor Arneson.
Uh, thank you, Worship. Um, I, I actually, in this case, although people have identified along the way and maybe increasingly challenges with our process, I actually believe in the collective wisdom of our council. And I think that at any given time, when you have a diverse group who's looking at a policy, they looked at pre-vetted information from staff, they did substantial engagement from our citizens who told us more or less what the parameters are, what they would be happy with. And so I feel that it is not going to serve any effective purpose to put this back to staff and send them sadly on a bit of a fishing expedition to try and find out why different communities do not currently support cannabis, you know? Could be a number of things. Maybe they want somebody else to go first. Maybe they just have, they find it stigmatizing and they don't want it. But I don't know how that really helps to inform us on our decision-making and our process. So we've had a process, we've gotten this far, and I wouldn't find any rational reason at this point to interrupt the process and send it back to staff unless you're gonna pull the plug on the thing entirely. And if that's the intention, I don't support that, because I believe that cannabis is a legalized a product that we ask people, there are lots of people who have not weighed in that actually want to have retail cannabis. Therefore, I think that we are doing our job by just making a decision on the matter. And if in the future, if we want to curtail it now potentially and have more later, then we could also do that. So I'm not gonna support moving this to back to staff.
Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, just, well, yeah, a couple of uh, points. I just have a quick question for uh, Counselor Woodward, really, really quick, Counselor Woodward. Now, where does that leave, with, you know, you're asking for a referral for more information, where does that leave the Alder Grove location that we approved last week?
We, we didn't approve any, any locations, Counselor Ferguson.
Oh, oh, I was on the impression we approved the one that was on. That went ahead for, oh, I thought we'd be coming back. Okay, it's coming back for third reading then again. Okay. Okay, sorry about that. I thought that we looked at that look. Okay, my question to staff would be uh, uh, is that we actually have, oh, not even a question to staff, my point is I was looking today uh, after my research and other members of counselors have already said that they have done their research. And I was looking for one for sure, maybe two today of all the lists. So that's where I was and of course, the other ones are, they're maybe in the future. So uh, of, of the nine that we thought, the location, I myself, one, maybe two, that's all I'm interested in because of the vetting I've done. I also said originally that of the motion to proceed with non-medical cannabis, I was initially one of the first people to oppose it. So I've done my own vetting and uh, that's been, and now whether we would gain anything from Surrey or not, I don't know, considering my vetting is one, maybe two. Thank you very much.
Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I think the uh, the, the process has uh, not been a perfect process, for sure. I think we all acknowledge that. But I do think that here we are today with um, a small group of locations that I think we've, we've gotten to the point now where I think these are, these are the best of the ones that applied. Uh, they are the ones that um, we've narrowed it down to and, and we've made some good decisions. I think the collective will and the collective thinking of the council has been good. And um, so I'm, I'm supportive of us uh, moving forward. I'm not sure there's a, a benefit to, to sending it further to staff. I think those communities that are neighboring to us, they will end up endorsing um, cannabis retail. They will have it in their communities. They may be a little behind us, but it's gonna happen. And uh, so I think we move forward. We're not gonna probably have eight as, as actually was requ- as actually was stated by the public. They won one in every community. We're not leaning to that. We're being much more moderate than that. And um, it is a legal product and it's legal across the province. Most communities in the province are, are moving towards this. I think we should keep moving forward. And I do think that the process will adjust and change. There'll be lots of adaptations as we move along. We don't know what it's gonna look like five years from now in cannabis retail in our community. Uh, we can't uh, read the future and see that, so I think we're gonna start, we're gonna shape it, we're gonna have little shapings along the way. And uh, adjustments to the guidelines and whatever that might be. And uh, but I think this is a good start and we should proceed with uh, voting on the ones today and see where that leaves us.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you very much. Um, you know, that interesting approach. Um, I generally like referrals. Um, I'm
Um, I'm concerned though that when we get a referral to see what, uh, another, um, municipality is doing. It's generally that, it's what they're doing, not necessarily why. And I think that when, if you were to investigate. You, the why thing would come into an interpretation, and I'm concerned that. Where, where would you get the, the why, if it was an environmental thing? And they didn't wanna dam up a river, I could see why, but, um, I'm just concerned about that aspect. Um, like maybe, maybe as councillor Whitmarsh is, maybe they're just behind. Maybe they're, they're, I mean, I can't see why Surrey wouldn't have one, um. Uh, the other thing is we have belabored, like we, this is quite a process we've gone through. We, it started, uh, quite some time ago and. We're, we're, we're getting to the point of where these people want, that, that today are, they, they, um. They're going to, um, flawed or not flawed, they, they want some answer, well, they don't wanna flawed answer, but what I'm saying is. Uh, they've been on the Q-Tip here quite a bit, there's lots of, they, they wanna know whether or not they can go ahead. Um, or, or not, so. It's a tough one because usually I like, I like to see, I like to get more information, I'm just concerned. Uh, I'm just concerned about, I, I think I'm ready to make a decision. So, yeah, my comments, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, no, I appreciate all those comments, I mean, if people have made up their minds, then yeah, there's no point in referral, I mean, I. I just think, like I already said, was just that I've never been gung ho on this process, so if others are, that's great, um. You know, for me, I think if I've gone over, uh, all hundreds of submissions from members of the community. There's lots of suggestions around insurance rates, well, why are insurance rates higher for cannabis retail if there's no problems associated with it? Um, you know, why do members of the Vancouver Police call me and tell me that there's significant issues related to cannabis retail? I just kinda want an explanation on, you know, are those things true, or do people have their opinions, but what are the facts, what are some of the staff gonna look? If others don't want that information, that's perfectly fine. Um, for me, you know, I'm, I'm thinking of, you know, my thing is a little different, we can approve it once and it's there forever. And good luck putting it back in the bottle once you've released it, so. To me, I thought some caution is warranted based on some of the feedback, if others don't agree, that's fine. Um, I've found this to be one of the most flawed processes, most, one of the most unfair processes to other proponents. Uh, people with seven out of seven are being voted down, I have no idea why. They're suddenly voted down, but yet these remainder are somehow the best that are left, I don't see any rationale to conclude that. When many people, seven out of seven have been voted down, uh, what's apparently, you know, um. Okay for Alder Grove is not okay for Murrayville and Brookswood. Uh, so again, I don't understand the rationale, here I'm very concerned about some of the things that I've heard from members of the community. Um, and I did want a bit more information, uh, from some of those voices. And I think that maybe some of these larger municipalities maybe do some, know, know some things that we don't, they deal with organized crime, they deal with a number of issues that we don't. Deal with on a daily basis, and I thought they might have some experience and some ideas of why they're saying no. And, and here we are, uh, about to approve it permanently, so that's fine, I'll accept my fate on this one, but I thought it was, uh, was a good idea. That wouldn't have slowed it down all that much, thank you.
I've had conversations had with the mayor, so he, in his opinion, on their election, that his constituents didn't want it. Um, retail cannabis in this community, so he didn't wanna go forward with it. I know that our, uh, council, uh, did ask staff to do a, uh, public consultation, I believe it's over seventy percent. Of those consultants, consulted were in favor, so a little bit different, if that helps, a little different dynamics, but I did.
Not particularly, but.
Did hear that from the mayor, so it's just part of the, you know, part of, the reasoning there is what they believe their community wants and what we believe our community wants. Just if that helps. Uh, so councillor Davis, is that from before, your hands still up, okay, councillor Long?
Well, I've already spoken to him, but I just wanna remind council that this, this was a priority that was set by council to, uh, to proceed with these. Uh, applications, so I'm, I'm kinda concerned, well, not concerned, but I might wanna bring that point out, and I think we had it as a priority. Uh, and now, and now we're, we're, we're backpacking somewhere, but I mean, I think enough has been said. Um, but I mean, if there's also, by the way, if, if councillor Woodward has received phone calls from the police, maybe that's something else we should talk about. Uh, and I'd be curious to, to know what, what those concerns would be. Um, but I don't think a staff referral is gonna give me that answer, and as I stayed, stated earlier. Probably this discussion needed to be at the, at the policy setting time, which I agree, we have. Use these guidelines in some respect and, and, uh, and I guess it's how you interpret them that makes the difference, but, uh, that discussion, I guess. Um, we didn't have a full council, perhaps councillor Woodward may have, uh, excused himself from the discussions, which doesn't. Kinda puts us in a, in a, in maybe with, in a spot that he finds himself in now.
Yeah, and every municipality city had, has different processes, now Vancouver went through a whole process where they had a lot of them. And then the regulations came in, had to deal with a lot of them, weren't, uh, didn't comply, so they had to kinda unwind. Pretty free and easy, oh, uh, approvals in the beginning, so I know they had completely different issues, so. Don't know if that relates to that, but certainly. My regulation of the retail cannabis how it started in Vancouver. All right, um, I'll call the question on the referral, all those in favor? And opposed? So it's, uh, Mayor Fowles, councillor Ferguson, councillor Long, councillor Whitmarsh, councillor Davis, councillor Arneson, councillor. So we'll move on and, uh, and stand councillor Long on bi- bi- five, six, five, one, so we'll just go through each one, and then when it comes to that, it's the second one. Uh, so when it comes to that, we'll, we'll take your.
Okay, that works, thank you.
So we'll just start with, uh, bi- five, six, three, zero, and this is the location, uh, at eight, eight, six, zero, two, oh, one street. So I would need, um. Uh, somebody like to move it?
I'll move it.
Councillor, sorry, councillor Long moved it? And councillor Whitmarsh seconded it? A discussion, councillor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I know, thanks, that map's actually really helpful, so, great, Pat, um, I did wanna confirm though.
Sorry, somebody's mic is on, it's, uh, could some, could you all check your mics, please, if it helps?
Great, thank you, yeah, so, you know, here, this is, uh, this is one that I think does have some rationale. But I have the, the same concern on the process from the beginning, I don't know. Uh, how we could have come up with a process more unfair to applicants and the business community than this one. So, for example, uh, we have voted down a, a series that, to me, were very similar to this one, including the other one in this area. And, and I still have no idea how I'm going to explain to people that I support this one but voted down all of theirs. Um, I have no idea what the criteria is, I have no idea really what the point is of this process anymore, it's been incredibly unfair. To applicants and the business community overall, to somehow now approve one person over another when they score similarly. Uh, I have no idea how we can defend this, uh, so I think at this point, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just probably have similar comments on each one. Uh, but at this point, uh, I don't support this, thank you.
Councillor Richter.
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor, um, I'm. Thinking along the lines of a, a number of people who've spoken on council already, and that is, I don't think we need all of these. And maybe given some of the comments that have been made, maybe we just wanna start with one or two of them. Uh, maybe one in the north and one in the south, something along those lines. Uh, what appeals to me about this particular location is it's not in the face of the community. It's sort of off the beaten path and you have to make it a destination to get there. So, uh, kids or youth are not gonna be walking over to this location. In order to, uh, procure, um. Cannabis if they're legally eligible to have cannabis. So, I'm gonna support this, but before we vote on it, Mister Mayor, I was wondering through you to staff. Do we have any kind of a mechanism in place that would allow us to, um. Remove licenses, should they end up becoming trouble spots? Uh, for excessive police calls or something like that, or. Are, are we by voting on these gonna be locked into them forever and ever? So that's my questions for you to staff, thank you.
So this is a land use decision, and there's a business licensing, uh, process that would go along with it, plus the provincial process, very highly regulated. So under the business licensing process, council would have that opportunity of, uh, of revoking the business license, uh, which I believe. That's happened in the past, or at least we've, we've gone through that, uh, I think some examples, uh, might be the. Um, early cannabis retail which were, uh, which, which didn't have, they didn't have a business license, and we ran through that process. But Mister Backen, maybe you can, uh, clarify some of that.
That's correct, your worship, the hierarchy is that there's a provincial license that has to be issued, and the township then must issue a, a business license. This, uh, this process is actually as to the use itself, so this is actually authorizing the use in a specific location as being contemplated by the application. Uh, if there was challenges, um, beyond that, uh, we would look first to the province, I guess, by reporting mechanism. And then secondly, the township has some business license mechanisms where it can effectively rescind the business license. If there is some issues, but of course, there's a due process to be followed.
Okay, so we do have an appeal process if. A, a, a location that's selected becomes problematic, that's good to know, thank you, thank you very much, Mister Backen.
Thank you, councillor Long.
Thanks, your worship, I'm only gonna be supporting a, a, a few of these, and this is the one that I do support, I think it is, it, it geographically, as. Uh, councillor Richter has mentioned, it, it services a good sized area. Uh, when I had difficulty with the, the other one that we did, that we defeated in Walnut Grove, that had a seven out of seven. It's because, uh, uh, there seemed to be some proximity to, to youth, and that wasn't actually in the policy. And I wish it had been because we did talk about daycares and, and so forth, but I think really what we were trying to get at is. Is, is it in, in an area where youth congregate, and I don't believe that, uh, that this industrial, quasi-industrial area. Um, uh, you know, fits an area where kids hang out, so it's, it's good in that respect, and it's very central and accessible. So, uh, it, it is gonna service, uh, uh, that whole area of, of the north, as was, as was said by councillor Richter. So that's the reason I'm gonna support this particular one, thank you.
Uh, councillor Kuntz.
Yeah, um, you know, part of my criteria for why I'm voting for one, not the other, or is. Is a lot of it is public feedback, and, um, if there was one that's got seven out of seven, that certainly bodes well. Um, but if there is a lot of public feedback that is against it, um, that, you know, goes into part of my decision, so. Um, I'm. Yeah, I guess that's, that's all I would have to say, but yeah, I'd like to see this one go forward as well, uh, for the very reason that it is sort of out. Um, it's along the highway, uh, people will be able to access it, um, and we, you know, we need to have one sort of. Uh, for people to, uh, access there, in my opinion, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson.
Yeah, as much as I agree with some of the points made by my colleagues, they're good points, and, uh. I just see this location as, you know, the, one I see maybe not now, but maybe in the future. Because I'm only prepared to, at this point in time, it's, uh. Endorse a couple, and, um, you know, as much as, uh, they have the motorcycle shop, they have, they actually, some of the, uh, local motorcycle. Motorcycle places, um, they have the family, uh, small bikes and the family, um, ATVs. You come down with a family, pick one, they have, they have some clothing shops in there and, um, some restaurants, I mean, I understand that. It's a kind of a way, but it, it's one I'm still not sold on, so I, I won't be supporting this one, thank you.
Uh, councillor Whitmarsh?
Uh, yeah, thank you, I just had a, uh, question, uh, your worship through to staff, um, about, uh. Maybe ties in a little bit with what councillor Richter was, uh, asking, and that is that, on, once we, um. Identify a location and they move in and start, and if they decide to change their location or they'd like to move somewhere else. What, what is the process that would follow, um, for them to do that, how would that work?
Uh, thank you, worship, because our process doesn't authorize this sort of retail operation unless it's been specifically passed by council. They would not be able to do so unless they went through a rezoning process, so, uh, let's say they wish to move a block to the south, for example. That would require another rezoning process before that could be contemplated.
Okay, so it's different than, uh, you know, a, a, an, another kind of business where businesses are free to move around, it doesn't come to council. This would come back to council.
Other business, if, any business can move around if it's, if the zoning, uh, is applicable, uh, this one. Because these, uh, zones are, are specific to that location. We don't have any other zones that are approved, they would have to go through rezoning, similar to other businesses that move to other. Commercial areas that may not specifically be zoned for their particular use, they have to, you know, we've had those in the past, they come to council for that, uh, amendment to the zone. Allow, allow their use, so it'd be very similar.
That, that makes sense.
Uh, councillor, oh, sorry, you're done?
No, that, that's helpful, I, I, I like, I, I think this is, uh, of, of the ones we have, I think this is a good location, I like that it's not connected to. Uh, you know, to too many other things, so I, I'm supportive of it.
Uh, councillor Whitmarsh, you hand this up to, to you, okay, thank you. Okay, so no further, um, questions, I will call the question on bi- five, six, three, zero, all those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Councillor Ferguson, councillor Woodward, anybody else? Those two that carries? Move on to bi- law number, uh, five, six, five, one, so councillor Woodward? One on Glover Road.
Clear conflict for the same reasons as always, thanks.
So we're on bi- five, six, five, one, nine, one, zero, three, Glover Road in Fort Langley, uh, could I have a motion, please?
Move Ferguson.
Councillor Ferguson moves it, seconder, councillor Kuntz, and especially councillor Richter.
Yeah, um, I'm not thinking that Fort Langley, with the small population base that it has. Uh, needs a cannabis retail location. And I'm also thinking that perhaps having one there is gonna create, um. Compounded traffic and parking issues for them, which they already face a lot of. I think having one in the Carvall area can service all of North Langley, including Fort Langley. So I'm not gonna be supporting the Fort Langley application, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, councillor Long.
The map that I'm looking at is the wrong one, it's, it's still showing the five, six, three, oh, can we have the five, six, five, one put up? Uh, but, uh, yeah, as I've said, uh, all along, I'll say it at each one, I suppose, that, uh, I don't think we need to have as quite as many as, that has. That have been proposed, and the one that I supported that has just passed, which is the one that's still on the screen. Uh, in my opinion, can serve all of North Langley, uh, you know, you don't have to go too far to get, uh, what you need, so. Um, I don't see a need for this one, and as I mentioned, it, also the policy didn't specifically say. Where youth congregate or where youth have the potential to congregate, it talked about daycares and other things. Uh, my understanding is, uh, well, who doesn't like, uh, Gilletteau, so it's, it's a, it's a probably a pretty. Uh, it's been pointed out that it's a kind of a hangout for youth, but I don't think we need so many, so that's why I won't support this one, thank you.
Councillor Richter.
I, I, I think councillor Long has a, a very good point there about youth. And I know my three children attended the Fort Langley Arts School. And the, the high school kids all migrate to downtown during their lunch hours and their breaks, so. I think there is a potential for youth congregation in this location, thank you.
Okay, so no further discussions, I will call a question, all those in favor? And those opposed? Councillor Richter, Mayor Fowles, councillor Long, councillor Whitmarsh, councillor Davis, councillor Arneson. So the motion fails? And so we'll ask councillor Whitmarsh. Okay, councillor Whitmarsh is back, okay, great, uh, so now we move on to bi- law number five, six, five, four. This is the one at two, zero, three, four, nine, eighty-eight Avenue. Walnut Grove slash Carvall, I guess, so I need a motion to put it on the floor, please.
I'll move it.
Councillor Whitmarsh, is there a seconder? Second? Councillor Davis, thank you, any discussion on five, six, five, four? Uh, councillor Whitmarsh?
Uh, I'll, thanks, Mister Mayor, I'll wait to speak until others have.
I thought your name was up there.
Uh, yeah, I took it down before you acknowledged me.
Okay, but you are up there, so you're first, first up, go ahead, you got, you got first class at this.
No, I'll wait until others.
Okay. Uh, councillor Richter.
Yeah, um, I think the community of Walnut Grove has been very clear. Yeah, um, I think the community of Walnut Grove has been very clear in their desire not to have a retail cannabis location within their boundaries. Um, because of the residential, the children, the youth. And I'm thinking that the one in Carvath is close enough to Walnut Grove to easily be able to service Walnut Grove. So we don't need another one this close to that one. So I'm not supporting it.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Whitmarsh.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, this is, this is one that, uh, for me, I, I probably am going to be supportive of this, of this location. Um, you know, I, I, I do agree that, uh, Walnut Grove and the residents have talked about Walnut, uh, about having one in Walnut Grove and have had some concerns with, with that. Um, pretty much most of the concerns we heard were about a different location, not this particular location. Um, I do feel that this location is not close to, uh, the, the school. It's quite far away from schools. Uh, high school kids don't come down this way during lunch hours. They, they, they head east to the, uh, malls and that, that are really great close to them. Um, and this is, uh, there's not really a, a large residential area that's too close to this. I mean, if there's some in behind there, but no, not a large amount. It's largely on, uh, eighty-eighth, which is a very busy, uh, four-lane road, uh, intersected by two, oh, two, which is a, uh, uh, road that goes through underneath the freeway. And I guess I look at it and go the pop, you know, we just talked about one store possibly in Carvath servicing Willoughby, uh, Walnut Grove and Fort Langley. So approximately eighty to eight to ninety thousand people that currently live there, that one store is going to service that. And I guess I'd rather see us have one store on the north side of the freeway that is largely a Walnut Grove, Fort Langley, which is for maybe forty-five to fifty thousand people. And then one in the Willoughby area, which is the Carvath side. So for those reasons, um, I am, I am going to support this one. And, um, obviously we'll see what the rest of council thinks, but I am supportive of this location.
Counselor Long.
Yeah, I'm going to cite the same reasons, uh, as I did earlier, that, uh, I think the Carvath location, uh, that, uh, will service this whole area. So I don't know why we would have one fairly close. And I don't know what the distance is exactly, but this seems to be quite close to one that we did approve. So I don't know, uh, that there would be a need for this particular one, uh, being so close to Carvath. Thank you.
Counselor Whitworth? Uh, you might be muted.
Someone keeps muting me after I unmute myself. So, um, yeah, the, this, so now that the Carvath location is approved, uh, I don't, I think the rationale for this one is certainly disappearing, especially given the, the feedback from the community. I must have, maybe I've received different packages from the community. I sensed a lot of concern about this location from a lot of members of the community, actually, including a daycare. Uh, you know, kids frequencing the strip mall for lunch and things like that. So, I, I heard a lot of people didn't want this location for a variety of reasons. So I, I don't really see how this one can be approved and the one down the street is voted down. So again, it just highlights that there's obviously some rationale that I don't have and don't understand. Maybe something, you know, along the lines of whoever hires the best lobbyists wins these, uh, these, these votes. I don't see a rationale for this one. I don't support it, never have supported it. And, uh, again, I, I think Walnut Grove is clearly spoken and if there's one, you know, a few blocks away from here, uh, in the Carvath area, I don't see a rationale to support this one. Thank you.
Counselor Ferguson.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, well, I think it's lost being said all right about one being approved already, although, like other council members, I did get an awful lot of, uh, correspondence, phone calls, emails and other things regarding this site. And, uh, I guess that's just like a public hearing when you get enough, uh, people saying that, uh, it's not a good location or it's, it's not something they want, uh, you have to move accordingly. So, um, yeah, I'm not going to support it either.
Any further discussion on bylaw five, six, five, four? See now I'm going to call a question. All those in favor? And those opposed?
Opposed.
Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Whitworth, Counselor Long, Counselor Richter, Counselor Arneson and Counselor Davis. So bylaw five, six, five, four, favors. Thank you. And now we move on to, sorry, bylaw five, five, six, five, four. Move on to bylaw five, six, six, four, and this is the one at three, two, two, seven, two, sixty-four Street in Aldergrove. I should have a motion to move on the floor. We've got Counselor Whitmarsh, seconded by Counselor Kunst and, uh, uh, Counselor Whitworth.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I guess I'm just gonna turn it into a bit of a broken record here, doing everything I can. I mean, I, I am struggling to say, how am I going to explain to Aldergrove residents when they can travel to Abbessford, uh, pretty close by, that's, that's decided to put in, uh, some of these? So what we vote down in Brookswood, Walnut Grove and Murrayville, apparently is going to be okay for Aldergrove. Uh, and I don't have that, I don't have that view. I think we've got to try to move Aldergrove forward in a, in a more positive way, consistent with other communities. So how am I going to explain to Aldergrove that what's, it's okay for them, but not okay for Murrayville, not okay for Brookswood and not okay for Walnut Grove? So I don't support this application. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor, or sorry, Counselor Richter.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm supporting this location for the same reasons that I supported the one up in Carvath. It's off the beaten track. It's not close really to anything. Um, certainly it's not, to my knowledge, a magnet for young people right now. Uh, it's in a bit of an industrial park. But I think the most important reason I'm supporting it is because if we've got one in the north of Langley, we should have one in the south of Langley. And this would be a good location to service the south of Fraser Highway, or south of Highway one, uh, in Langley. So I will be supporting this one.
Uh, Counselor, please.
Yeah, I'll be supporting this one too, um, for the same reasons, uh, Counselor Richter spoke of. Um, I would like to see one out in Aldergrove. Um, you know, I don't, I don't know how I would be able to tell people if we got through this whole process and then didn't vote for any of them. Um, again, it's not a perfect process. And I am not a cannabis user, but I do know that there are people who are very much helped by cannabis, whether they're for sleeping, for anxiety, for lots of reasons that are, is not, you know, for, um, just the enjoyment of smoking a doobie. It's for, for other good reasons and they don't want to go into the community and to buy it from people who are maybe not, it's not a safe supply. So, um, I, I am going to, um, support this, um, application, um, so that the people in, out, in Aldergrove, um, can access a safe supply of, um, non-medical marijuana. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, this is, uh, you know, I will support, uh, this one for many of the reasons that, uh, other counselors have suggested. Um, I, I think that, you know, in, in response, I know, uh, Counselor Whitworth suggested that we said no to Murrayville and no to Brookswood. I'm not sure that's exactly what happened. I, what happened was there was one application in each of those areas and we didn't decide, we decided that that wasn't the right location. I don't think that council said that Brookswood's never allowed to have a cannabis retail and that we'll never see one in Murrayville. I think it was those locations weren't, weren't appropriate and we said so, but it's possible down the road, a different location, a different time, maybe that happens. I don't know. But, uh, to say that we said no to some communities and yes to others, I don't think is accurate. I think that in this case, we went, we looked at each application and it's on its own and at the merits of it. And I think this one, um, uh, does meet my standard of what I would do if I was putting in a cannabis retail. I think the location is appropriate.
Uh, Counselor Ferguson.
Uh, I think there's some comments, uh, regarding, uh, uh, Karate School or something in that area. And, uh, I know that that caused some, uh, some challenges and, um, I think we're right about one thing. I think council's right about one thing. There will, we might have some today and, uh, this year and then maybe others in the future. So, you know, I'm, I'm gonna, I, because of the, the Karate School and things like that, I'm vetting this one out. Thank you.
Counselor Long.
Yeah, I, uh, for the same reasons, uh, I, I don't know if we need so many in the township. I suppose having one in this vicinity might be appropriate in that it services, I don't know about the south of, of Langley, but certainly east, with the furthest east. But, uh, yeah, it's, it's troubling for me that the Karate School is there. And I think the policy, uh, sh- you know, it's too bad we didn't, I didn't make a, 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 an argument when the policy was approved. Because it should have said, uh, should not be in, in the proximity of where youth congregate. And this particular Karate School is there. And, uh, I kick myself for not saying something at the last meeting because, uh, I did see it there and it did concern me. But, uh, uh, it concerned me even more after the vote was taken. And, um, I thought the, uh, there are other more appropriate, perhaps, places in, in Aldergrove. But do we even need one here? So, but, I mean, i- it, it's troublesome to have the school and I don't think it's been addressed properly. Um, I, I did talk to the proponent and mentioned that they had a concern in, in terms of that school being there. Uh, and I don't, I don't know what's happened. Uh, it certainly didn't satisfy me the answers I got, so I'm afraid I won't be supporting it.
Uh, Counselor Whitworth.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate those, those comments. I mean, uh, that's just not how I see it. I mean, uh, in regards to one, you know, certainly a community, you have a process. You say you're gonna, you know, maybe, you know, I think the, the issue is maybe I'm just the only one here that's actually been an applicant for land use zoning before. So I know what it's like. And what we've done here is just not okay. We've, we've put out a policy, we invite people to apply and then we vote them down on someone criteria that I don't even know what it is. That it's not okay in Murrayville, not okay in Brookswood, but here we are, we're going to approve it in Aldergrove. Uh, to me, a troubling location. Um, and if you want, it's called non-cann- can, non-medical. So it's not about, you know, people sick who need cannabis. There's been, they've been able to get cannabis for a long time. There's, uh, there are going to be options, uh, very close by in Abbessford. I don't see the urgency to add this to Aldergrove. And again, I don't know how I'm going to explain to people that, yep, it's okay in Aldergrove, it's not okay in Murrayville and Brookswood. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor, please.
Um, from what I understand, uh, we never heard from the people who actually operate the karate shop. So, um, when I made this decision, I was not aware that there was a karate shop. And, um, also I believe it's from three till six o'clock. Um, and that was after the fact. So, um, again, not a perfect process, but it's the one we got and it's the one we gotta work with. So I'm in support of this one.
Just to verify for Counselor Icondole.
Thank you.
Yeah, there you go. Uh, Counselor Richter.
Yeah, well, a couple of things. I, I, to me, this is not about putting one in Aldergrove. It's about putting one that can service south Langley area and east Langley. I mean, we had a discussion not that long ago about how we desperately had to reopen the, uh, Walnut Grove pool to service the population up there at the same time as we had the Aldergrove pool o- open and servicing the rest of the population. So I'm not sure I see the difference here. The other thing that I do question is, I, I did see some correspondents come through after the fact that kind of made me think that there were rival applications. Um, perhaps trying to torpedo each other with the comments that were being made. So I, I'm thinking, I'm sticking with my vote. I think we should have one to service south Langley. And this is the location for me. It's off the beaten path. You can't see it from Fraser Highway. Or really from two sixty-fourth Street. Uh, so people who want this have to make a dedicated trip to get it.
I don't see any further. Hold on. Counselor Davis.
Thank you. Um, you know what? It's not a pro- perfect process. Um, I, I feel that we have the process and I don't think I cannot vote. Um, I, I'm going to vote for two of them. I'm, uh, one in south Langley and the one in north. In Aldergrove, uh, I like the way they're situated. Um, I, I just, I, I don't know how we're going to get around, um, this, this process, uh, that Counselor Whitworth has. I, I, I don't know how we're going to get around it unless we just kibosh the whole thing and start over. And maybe that might be the, the thing, uh, that, uh, but I, I feel that we have to move on. Uh, it's a legal product. We're going to open. I, 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 I think who are fine for now and things can change really in the future. So that's why, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm going for, for this one. Thank you.
Uh, no further discussion. So I'll call a question on bylaw five, six, six, four. All those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Arneson, Counselor Whitworth. Am I missing anybody? Okay, that carries.
And Long?
Oh, Long's opposed? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so what was the result then?
Five, four. So carries. Get all that now. All right, so now we move on to bylaw number five, six, six, six. And this one is completed at, uh, six, two, two, five, two hundred Street. Willoughby area. I will ask for a motion to get this on the floor. Your motion?
Oh, I'll move that one.
Counselor Long and the seconded?
Yeah, the Pizza Hut one. Yeah, I like that.
Uh, seconded.
I'll second it.
Counselor Whitmarsh, thank you. Uh, discussion, Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, just, uh, for clarity, w- w- one of, one, one of the stores that, uh, was it, is this one that was going to be a provincially operated store or no? I can't remember.
Yes, um, staff are noting yes.
This one is. Okay. It's going, and so, uh, the question, one of the questions I had was maybe through Your Worship to staff was around signage. This is a pretty, um, um, you know, this is a pretty central location, right off two hundred. It's pretty easy to see. The building's quite, uh, that building's quite a distinct, separate building from other buildings. It's not in a strip mall. It's its own building. So I'm just wondering about signage and those types of things, uh, that we have in order to ensure that it's not, uh, uh, too, too big and bold and bright. I don't, I guess I don't want to flashing lights and a big giant sign right on that corner advertising cannabis. So I'm just wondering through Your Worship to staff about issues around signage and marketing and so on at that location.
Mr. Second.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Uh, there are no development permit requirements, uh, for this particular site. Uh, the applicant has not proposed any amendments to the exterior look of the building. Uh, that said, uh, if they do plan to amend the exterior, they will have to go through either a development permit process or alternatively, uh, if it's of a minor nature, it can be endorsed at a staff level, uh, as long as it is within the, uh, the guidelines. As well as the guidelines, the development permit guidelines of, of the area, as well as the signed bylaw of the town of Langley. So anything beyond that will have to be, uh, approved by council. Uh, so there are no just to add to that. There are no provisions for standalone signage. Uh, unless there is a, there is something built in as far as the land use contract is concerned, uh, which I cannot speak to definitively at this point, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, because this location is an in-your-face location, I'm not supporting it. There are far too many young people that work in the businesses around there, that walk around there, um, that go to the malls around there, the stores around there. Um, I don't think we need to have this location because of its high visibility. And also I'm very concerned that this location would primarily service Langley City. And I don't think it's our job to be servicing Langley City. So I'm not supporting this application. Thank you.
Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, I think that Counselor, uh, Richter took the words right out of my mouth. I, I, I wanted to ask staff, how close are we to the, uh, Langley City border? Is it half the road or something? Anything like, help me out if I can. If staff can help me out.
Mr. Second, we know how far this location is from the, uh, Congress, the state language.
Uh, well, Your Worship, I can, I can say it's, it's very close as council or, or members of council are aware. Uh, the area is, is not, uh, defined by, uh, sort of, you know, very straight and, and clear lines of, of, uh, boundary jurisdiction uh, around Willowbrook Mall area, including this area. So I can, uh, perhaps as council, uh, discusses this application further, I can, uh, dig up the jurisdictional map and, and bring that up on the screen for councils, uh, viewing, Your Worship.
Uh, I know, there's no need to do that. I do believe that the safe way is a hun- is one hundred percent in the Uh I know, there's no need to do that, I do believe that the Safeway is a hun- is one hundred percent in the city. So I was looking and looking, looking at this, um you don't have to bring it, I'm not gonna support it anyway, I think it's a prime, this prime location. If they wanna put a uh the pot shop or what do they call it, retail com- uh cannabis shop right beside Safeway on their side, it's fine with me, thank you.
What happened to your name? That's odd up there now, it's not again.
Yeah, no, it's fine, I'll go.
Either I'm misreading my little blue hands.
No, it's fine, I just trying. Just trying to deferential others, it's fine, I can go now.
No, that's okay, I'll have equal say here. Gets confused, so okay, take you off.
So your, your worship, just before councillor Long speaks, this is, this is the uh, I hope you can see this, this is the. The boundary and I believe the application is in this, in this area.
Well, okay.
Coming right here.
So then the 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 policy guidelines that of course we sometimes refer to and sometimes don't. Talk specifically about uh on the boundary, uh so this then is within. The boundary um. Policy that we that we have, that we we're not going to put them within so many meters of a boundary. Is this then within those meters or not? Because I don't forget the ones in Aldergrove that we booted out early in the process. Were, there was two of two of them at least that were on the boundary uh of Abbotsford and we said no to that, at least I, that's my rationale. So i- is that the case with this one? Because I I I did like the idea of the of the of seeing a provincial operation, do you know, because it it's run by the government, it would be interesting to see that. And give folks a choice, I suppose, but if it's if it's right on that boundary, I've got some issues.
So your worship, the boundary is the central line of sixty-second Avenue. And as you can see, the subject building is is just north of that.
Okay, thank you, that's right on it.
So if i- i- in the scoring system that we had, it would definitely have a, would not have a tick mark on that one, is that correct? Can I get a clear answer, please?
Uh I don't recall if there was anything with respect to proximity with with boundaries, councillor Long, uh through through his worship. I I think it may have been something that that may have been discussed by members of council. But I don't recall it as a specific requirement of the policy. Uh that said, again, uh if you just allow me a few minutes, I will try and uh and get to the answer.
Okay, thank you, so uh wait for that and we'll just go on to the next question, if that's okay, councillor Long. Uh councillor Whitmarsh, did you hand up for a second time?
We're all gonna get the answer before the vote's taken.
Oh yeah, for sure.
Yes, I am up for a second.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, um somebody asked a question about signage, um I know that's something that when I met with each, as many as I could. To ask those questions, what their storefront was gonna look like, because um I was concerned about. It not looking like we, you know, it's the big um pot leaf on the side of the thing. Um so could someone uh, what, why, I can't remember what the what the answer was about the signage, sorry.
Certainly staff can help out with the provincial regulations around signage.
Your worship, uh while Raymond's looking up, the the answer Raymond provided was that there's been no um applications made. Either through development permit or variance or otherwise for there to be any signage. So the signage would have to reflect effectively uh what would be on the uh existing building, if you will, in terms of tha- that. Uh we have a sign by law and we have um the other uh elements that control it. So the signage would have to be very modest or it would have to come back to council for approval because it's a development permit area. So effectively, it would probably be uh similar to the level of signage that's there now. With the exception that there is no podium signs provided, so it would be something on the building, it would be limited to on the building. And anything that would be significant would have to return to council for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Uh co- Mister Seth, do you have the answer yet for councillor Long? Maybe we go to councillor Woodward, councillor Woodward?
Yeah, thanks, so I'm gonna, again, I think we can just, yeah. Feel very repetitive, I apologize for being repetitive uh on the process. Um because I recall, I recall getting calls from two proponents about their applications. Uh not being supported by members of this council because they were on the Abbotsford border. And uh here we are now, considering one right on the Langley City border. You know, I I again, I think it just highlights the the process here, it's just, it's just beyond recognition of anything that's fair and reasonable. I don't know how I'm gonna explain to that person, yep, you had seven out of seven, but you were within certain proximity to Abbotsford border. And you're not around anymore and here we are with the guy in Langley City that hopefully will see the same face. So I don't support this just out of basic fairness, thank you.
Um yeah, just a question, uh your worship through the staff, if uh this is a provincially regulated store. So if if the council decides that this is not a good location. Um would the province be working with the township to find another location? Or does it just sort of, does it die or is it this location or bust? Or how do, how does that work when it's a provincially regulated uh uh store application?
Uh thank you, your worship, the um subject to the inherent right of the province to always override the municipal bylaw. Which is done about as often as I think uh a lottery win. Um the provinces, like anyone else, stand in terms of its application process. They would um look at the uh decision of council and could elect to seek other locations. Or they could uh elect to just uh discontinue the process and uh um and not proceed. Um I do not know what their position would be at this time, uh I think that's something they'd have to consider after. Uh perhaps hearing uh the debate, uh the reasons of council and the uh the the overall direction of the community.
Okay, I think that that's helpful for me, I mean, I do like the idea of having a provincially regulated store if we're gonna have one uh cannabis. But I'm not sure that this is the best location, it's uh right, right at the center. It just sort of feels like it's right in the heart of our of our business community. Uh by the mall, by Long two hundredth, it's just, I don't think it's a great location for that, so I'm probably gonna say no to this.
So it says here generally the proposed location for cannabis retail store should not be located within two hundred meters of an existing school, park, recreation center. Or another cannabis retail store, including those located in adjacent municipalities, I believe that's where it it relates to adjacent municipalities, so nothing uh.
Your worship, the uh the clarity here that may be necessary is that the discussion was to do with another cannabis store. In proximity to the municipal boundary, not to the municipal boundary itself, but another cannabis store, that's what ended up being in the policy.
Yes, thank you, so councillor Long decided to answer your question.
Well, y- yes and no, uh in my mind, as as was stated by councillor Woodward, we said we weren't gonna put them within two hundred meters of a boundary, that's the, that's what I believe. So I really need to know, and and it's been mentioned a couple of times, it looks like it's obviously very close. Is it or is it not within two hundred meters of the boundary to Langley City? If it is, then I can't support it, if it isn't, perhaps I could. Um sure looked like it was, it was pretty close, but do we have an actual measurement?
It's your worship, it is within two hundred meters of municipal boundary, but again, that is not something that was contemplated in the policy that council adopted.
That's fine, so I I, if I could just finish my comments, I did, I did support that concept that we should stay away from the boundaries. I did feel that the provincial one would be in order, uh so perhaps I'll have to look, uh go shopping for another property and come back. And I suppose that's possible, so I won't support this if it's within two hundred meters of the Langley City, which apparently it is, thank you.
Uh yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and it's not just the Langley City boundary that this is close to, it's also the Surrey boundary. And not just that, but there's a future Skytrain going through this area. And we know that there's nobody servicing Surrey right now in terms of cannabis. So I just don't think this is a good location for Langley. I would welcome having a provincial store as well, but I think there's lots of other locations in Langley. Where the province could locate a store and we would probably welcome it, but this is not the location, thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to let you know, Mr. Mayor, I just have two related motions after this, if you'd entertain them. The um, this particular location, if you recall, there was a grid that wasn't about the policy. It was the seven out of seven scoring, and as I recall it, the seven, one of the points was two hundred meters within a municipal boundary. On that seven out of seven scoring, which wasn't entirely based on the policy, now do I have that incorrect, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Mister Seth, you can verify, it wasn't the policy document per se, it was that seven out of seven scoring.
Your worship, uh councillor uh Woodward is correct, uh but so was I. The fact is that we had a policy that then council wished to, I guess, not look at in isolation of other matters. So then we introduced other matters and I believe if I'm mistaken, uh the tables that were, that that were subsequently presented to council. Into the 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 policy provisions and then other factors, and this would have been part of the other factors.
So I think that's important to clarify, is I understand it, you know, there were some that struggled with council support based upon this the scoring criteria. Uh that wasn't a part of the 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 criteria when they applied. So to me, that applies to this one, I don't know, I go to them and say, yeah, we scored you a little bit over here. Now this would somehow even hopefully get appro- I mean, I, so I don't support it and I and I really hope it doesn't go forward again out of basic fairness, getting those clarifications, thank you.
See no further discussions, so I'll call the question on bylaw five six six six, all those in favor? And all those opposed?
Opposed.
So councillor Coons, councillor Arneson, councillor Ferguson, councillor Woodward, councillor Whitmarsh, councillor Richard, councillor Davis, councillor Long. And I may as well throw in Maritro's opposed.
It's unanimous.
Alright, councillor Woodward, do you wish to, you had some?
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, if you'll entertain it, I would like, so you mentioned the application at seventy-second at two oh eighth roughly. As uh not being, you know, processed or the applicant not responding or it's the proponent or. I would like to make a motion that we definitively vote that down, whether they proceed.
Yeah, procedurally, it's received first and second reading, uh so.
Would I have to move third reading and then advocate we voted down?
No, you can't, there's no third reading on it, I don't think you can, it's just a dead issue until they come back, I don't think they're coming back. So it would have to be reconsideration of first and second reading if you wanted to and that takes the next meeting.
Would you entertain that or does that have to be notice of motion?
Connection is a notice of motion of reconsideration for first and second, but I'm gonna check with the clerk, just to make sure I'm on the right track with the policy procedures, but I believe.
Trying to achieve.
You haven't conceded with third reading, so.
I just want to achieve clarity for the residents there that this is not ongoing.
Miss Bauer, uh what is it, what is it probably, a notice of motion or a first and second reading or can you deal with it?
You can reconsider first and second reading or I think first and second reading reconsideration would be the best way to do that. Uh and it would need to go to the next meeting, as it's not on the agenda this evening.
How many days is it worth of reading? If you deal with first and second reading, more than thirty?
I believe so.
Mr. Mayor, just a a point of order, I think.
Yeah, sure.
If I may, um did we all already reconsider first and second and bring it back? Like, can you reconsider a reconsideration? On this one, on the seventy-second Avenue one?
But uh did we reconsider the first and second or we just reconsider bringing it forward? I don't think, I think there was a, there was two motions, one was uh we had the workshop and some went ahead and some didn't, this one may have fell, fallen into that. Or we we uh sent it to, to first and second reading. Uh but we reconsidered, I'd have to ask the clerk to review that and perhaps, either way, it has to be reconsideration, we can deal with it next meeting. Even if it comes back next meeting, we know what to do with it, if it comes back at third.
It's only related to my next uh, if you'd entertain these, the second motion, Mr. Mayor.
So just to close this one off, um the clerk will check if first and second reading had been reconsidered. Uh it may not have been first and second reading that was reconsidered, it may have been our motion to move it forward, the first and second reading or not to move forward. And that got reconsidered, now first and second reading uh is approved, we'll double check if that was a reconsideration on that. But if if uh not, it would be appropriate for a member of council to bring forward notice of motion for reconsideration. I could do it, but I can't because on the community charter, it has to be within thirty days. So I I would, I would wait for that, so councillor Woodward, you'd like to go to the next.
Yeah, the next item, it's related to the cannabis retail, so I would like to make a motion and if it, you know, if it doesn't have a second or that's fine. Uh I'd like to make a motion that we refund the application fees for every proponent that applied. Meeting the terms of the existing policy at the time of their application and was not ultimately approved, so no.
I will second that.
As soon as I will check, do we not have a motion like that on the floor, that we're gonna refund it?
I don't think it was quite as expensive as that.
Applicants were refunded if they were, I'll check with Miss Bauer, has it?
Thank you.
I do believe at one point there was a motion to refund it, uh after which time there was another motion to go forward with all applications. So eventually it es- essentially nullified the previous motion, so at this time, there's no motion to do that.
So that's to be, it's being consistent with previous motion, so it's moved and seconded.
Like to speak to it or fund me?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure uh hands are up just for this, if those who had hands up, uh so you go ahead, councillor Woodward.
Yep, thank you, so I think my rationale for this is gonna be pretty clear. That uh, you know, that the business community needs, I think, to be treated a little bit better than I perceived it. And I use that word deliberately, perceived, the way I've seen and and experienced and witnessed this process, I I think it's been. Been been pretty unfair to a lot of business people who were invited to make applications based on the policy. And for a long period of time, ended up not being approved for no follow of their own. Uh for applications at locations that met the terms of said policy, which I wish uh the policy had not written the way it was. So uh I followed along till the end, I think I've made my my points here to pretty clear today. I think everybody that uh experienced this process should have their fees refunded, thank you.
So on that motion, councillor Coontz, we we are, just be mindful of the time and and uh. We are, we have lots to go on our agenda yet tonight, so.
Yeah, I'm coming from maybe a different place, but I I agree that um I, you know, think that uh these applicants. Who um were not successful, um that they, that they get their um their fees back. Um and I would like to thank all of the applicants, I never felt pressured. I, you know, really appreciated uh meeting and talking to so many of the different um uh business uh people. And um really wanna appreci- um you know, thank them for their patience through all of this. And um sadly, only two went forward, um I voted for a couple more than that, um but um yeah. Anyway, those are my comments.
Yeah, this clarification, so what, is this motion s- says that they have to get seven out of seven?
No, this, I I think it's refund those that applied and worked through.
Complied with the policy.
That's right. Comply with the policy, which wouldn't have to be, it's have to be any.
Well, any, that, so it, so they did.
This not confuse the scoring, the scoring is just a a mechanism to give us a sense of where they, that it wasn't.
In other words, if they applied, if they applied and didn't succeed in our process or whatever you wanna call it. And they got a refund, it doesn't matter whether they got seven out of seven, six out of seven or five out of seven. My understanding.
Thank you, okay.
No, you worship, speaking here.
Anybody that applied and came to council obviously complied with the policy, they wouldn't have got your staff.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
So the scoring is a separate matter, so this is like, all of those, basically, this is sum it up, all of those that failed to get past third reading will get refunded on their application.
I think it's fair because and I don't, I don't share the same concerns as everybody on council, they've been treated poorly and everything else, it's a complicated process. We've done the best we can and if you didn't make it, you get your money back and 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 the reason I might support this, and maybe staff can clarify. My understanding is the province is also going to refund unsuccessful applicants. Because don't forget, we're only one part of the process and I do believe that you have to go to the province and and give them ten grand or something to get your application happening. Uh should you get approval from the municipality, so I don't know if staff has any knowledge of that. But if that is the case, that the province is refunding it, then it's only fair that we should as well. If the province is not, well, anyway, if staff had to comment on that, I appreciate it, your worship.
Mister Seth, do you have any information on what problems do you not wish to please?
Uh no, your worship, I do not, I can quickly again check and see what I can find out. What what I do have information about is how much staff time has been spent on processing these applications though.
But just.
Very thanks, uh.
Your worship, you know, your worship, you know.
We don't know that, he doesn't know what the province has.
Okay, that's fine.
I think a big part of it is, they have to get through our process before they even go to the province.
Let's let's put the process aside then, uh of of whatever the province is doing. But I'll move an amendment and see how far it goes, I don't, like, staff are saying, this has been.
But I'll move an amendment and see how far it goes, I don't, like, staff are saying, this has been a lot of work for staff. Uh, people take chances, and, and, and I don't know how it works with other rezoning applications that, that get failed, uh, for whatever reason. So the amendment would be fifty percent, your worship.
Okay, is there a seconder to that? I don't see a second, okay. Okay, we'll move on. Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, certainly be a lot of discussion, again, for a third point, uh, different than the other two that I've mentioned, that, uh, they're in favor of moving ahead, is in my case, I was looking at, I don't think I've had a favorable for any of the ones that were, um, presented today, so I'm zero for, we started off for nine or something, uh, a few months ago, I'm zero today. So it gives you an idea that, um, we need to roll up our sleeves and, uh, work on what works and what doesn't, uh, and, uh, considering you looked at, uh, eight or nine before, a location, that is, that's predict their stores, not the number, we had over twenty people apply, so yeah, there's some work we have to do, and, um, certainly, um, I suggest returning the fees, uh, to those folks and those, uh, God bless those people for putting their names forward, I mean, the federal government made marijuana or cannabis legal a few years ago, wasn't that long ago, and, uh, it's a challenge to get through all this, and, um, certainly, uh, you can hear for our discussion today, last week, for the last little while, our challenges that we've come up with. I do respect and certainly have talked to staff, as, as other members of council have as well, as well as the applicants or proponents. Uh, it's been a difficult, difficult time, and I thank them for their time, and it has not been easy, has not been easy for any of us, but we move on regardless, thank you.
Mindful of the time, Counselor Whitmarsh.
Uh, yeah, I just would say that, uh, you know, I think it's clear that, uh, when there's twenty-one applications, I don't think any of them ex- expected that there was a guarantee they were going to get a cannabis retail shop, we had time, time talked about eight, so obviously, if twenty-one apply, they know they're not all getting it, and so they knew that was happening, um. However, it is a very challenging process, and it's the fir-, it's the only time we'll probably ever entertain this many applications at once, from now on, it'll probably be a one-offs down as the, as we go down the road. So in this case, because of the challenge it was there, I certainly am absolutely supportive of returning their fees in this case for this time, I think it's only fair that we do that, even though there is, obviously, we weren't gonna get twenty-one, so, uh, but absolutely, return the fees.
Counselor Richter?
Um, yeah, and I, I think that, I agree with everybody else who says this has been a very complicated, muddy process that we've worked our way slowly through to the best of our abilities, but it's a first-time process, and as such, it's a learning process for everybody. I did want to ask Mr. Backen a specific question, if I could. Uh, Mr. Backen, if we refund these fees, having refunded them earlier and then pushed everybody through to third, so they actually got a crack at third, um, are we setting any kind of a precedent relative to other third readings that could come back to haunt us? Like, would we be in a position where anybody who never got through a third reading on anything ever again would get their fees refunded?
Uh, your worship, it's really up to the discretion of council, um, there is, I guess, a concern of the perception of a precedent, but the precedent would only apply to the exact same circumstances of, uh, uh, I guess, a cannabis retailer coming forth for the first time in Langley. Uh, I'm not concerned about the issue of the precedent, it's, it's council's discretion, it would extend to the re, uh, refund of, uh, fees at certain points, uh, I think it's something we wouldn't want to make a habit of, but I think we, we hear the complications in this circumstance, and I think it's within council's jurisdiction, without fear of a precedent being set that would be uh, negative to future rezoning applications.
Thank you.
Counselor Arneson?
Um, thank you, worship, I guess I take a contrary view about this, because I know we talked about this before, but it seems, and even if it doesn't create an absolute precedent going forward, it still calls into question the idea of fairness to me. I assume that there will be other cases in the future where we're developing policy, and applicants will come forward, and for whatever reason, they may not be successful, and I don't want to have the sort of Damocles over my head, thinking, well, in one instance, we're feeling that it's fair and the right thing to do to give money back when an applicant fails. So I would also point out, from an optics point of view, I don't think that that particularly puts this whole process in a good light, and maybe some people don't have a problem with that, but really, I think when you're saying, well, we'll just give you your money back 'cause it was such a, a lousy policy and how we administered, it was not very good. I, I just really don't think that that's, uh, the good light that we'd like, uh, to see ourselves in, and some people may strongly disagree with that, but also, I would like to know how much it costs to give them all their money back, because we keep talking about it's a COVID year and we have to cut back, et cetera, and at the other side of our mouth, we're saying, well, but this, you know, is a different circumstance, so of course, we have entirely the right to do that, but I, I'm just not gonna support giving the money back, because when people make an application, it was very clear to me that what we had was a proposition where potentially nobody would actually get through our process, and that is the potential, and whether you think it was a fair process or not, I really struggle with the fact that any of our processes would be judged in such a way to the point where we say, well, let's just give them their money back then if it didn't work out. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Davis?
Yes, uh, thank you, I'll be really quick, um- Okay, a question, a question I had was, uh, Ra- uh, Mr. Ram, Mr. Steffi had said he, staff time, could you make an estimate on staff time for an application? Through the, through the, froze?
Perhaps it might be easier just to say how much staff fee was, you know, how many to go back, then that would give us an indication.
Well, no, well, we know, we know what the, we know what the application fee was, um, and that's simple to figure out, but there was a cost to staff to deal with this. Okay, anyhow, that was one question, and the other thing is, the, the, I, I hope that we're not setting a precedence, and in the last half hour or hour, what we've spent on this, we're starting to make a mockery out of this whole process. And I don't know if this is to, to, to appease, so that we can all go home tonight and sleep properly or not. Um, and I'm, I'm concerned that, um, you know, I don't wanna start a piss and match, or a pee and match, or whatever you wanna call it, but, uh, I, I, you know, because this is the, the beginning of the process, this is the first time we've done it, and we've all admitted, like, this isn't staff's fault, this is council's. So if you're going to sit here and poo poo, like, poo poo, uh, count, like, it's our fault, that this, we, we had a, we had input in this. So I, I just, we gotta, we gotta, I guess maybe, I, my, my, my question is, how much did we spend on staff? Because we can't, uh, you know, we, we can't be giving out, uh, refunds just because it's, makes us feel bad. Um, well, yeah, we can, anyhow, just a comment, I don't know if I can get an answer.
Steffi, do you have any, uh, estimation on, um, staff time on, or quick towards? And there's a, there's a lot, uh, but maybe just on, there's a lot of process going ahead of time, I don't think we're interested in public engagement staff time, or whatever, because they're dealing with an application as it comes forward, um, doing up the report, doing the application.
Uh, thank you, worship, perhaps I can just, uh, uh, provide an answer to a previous question. Uh, the province of British Columbia charges seven thousand five hundred per application for cannabis and, and, uh, liquor, and it is non-refundable unless the application was made in error or the local government does not permit, uh, such usage. Uh, so that's pretty clear from, from their, their website, that they do not provide for refunds. As far as our processes concerned, your worship, we collect approximately a base fee of three thousand dollars per application, uh, for rezoning applications, and, and then if there are other applications that are running concurrently, there are other fees, but generally about three thousand dollars per application. Uh, but that's not the question, I guess, that was being asked by Counselor Davis, or part of the question, maybe was that, but the more important part is how much staff time was actually spent, and without any science behind it, I can, uh, I can confirm for council that it was, it would have been a minimum of, uh, forty hours, uh, that's just one week of an equivalent, uh, employee, one full-time employee, uh, per application, uh, if not more, so I'm, I'm, I'm using that as a minimum of forty hours, uh, times twenty, that's eight hundred hours of, of staff time, uh, and then, I guess, average staff, uh, uh, compensation rates, whatever, whatever you wish to use, your worship, uh, is, I guess, depending on, on the numbers. But that, I, I think is, is a rough idea that council may be looking for, uh, about a week, uh, per application, uh, in terms of a processing term that does not include, uh, manager, the supervisor reviewing the reports, or even myself reviewing the applications.
Right, uh, what about Counselor Long?
Yeah, your worship, I, I, I wish you hadn't accepted the motion, because as you can see, we're sort of rushing a little bit, anyway, we have, but it's an important issue, uh, it probably should have been brought up in a future meeting, uh, but you've just heard from our staff that there's a huge amount of, of time have gone into it. It sounds to me like the province is going to refund you, because if the, if the local government didn't allow it, then, uh, I think that's what I heard, so they might be getting their money back, I don't know, I hear, I hear maybe different things, but, uh, it sounds to me if, if municipality has rejected it, then they should get a refund, right, from the province? But we've put a lot of work into it, and we spent a lot of money, it's, uh, it, it does set a precedence. I know that Mr. Backen is not that concerned, and others on council feel, uh, it's an appropriate move to make, but I think it does set a precedence, because everybody takes a chance when they go for a rezoning. And I thought that my approach of fifty percent would have been fair, nobody wants to support that, which I, I, I don't understand that part, that would soften the blow a lot, you would get a cost back at least, and, uh, you know, but we have to answer to our taxpayers, so here we are, gonna write a ticket and, and send back eight hundred hours, holy cow, I don't know how much they get, uh, but that sounds like an awful lot of taxpayers' money that's been expended in this process, uncomfortable as it is, challenging as it is, but that's the gig we're in, so I would have supported a fifty percent, uh, but that didn't go any, very far, so I, I can't support giving all this money back, and it's a shame that it's kinda come at this time too. We probably should have had more time to think about it and more research to do on it, given what we've got, can't support it. Let's keep our, our ta-, it's a COVID year, we have budget concerns, time has been spent, chances have been taken, and, uh, we gotta, we gotta pay the piper, so I, I can't see how anyone on council would support it, but, so I certainly won't, that's for sure.
Counselor Richter?
Mic on here, sorry, yeah, um, I was wondering, can we refer this to staff to give us a report on this? Because eight hundred hours, um, total at an average staff cost per hour of what, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars an hour? Like, does the fifty-seven thousand that we'll be giving back even cover what went out in staff costs anyway? So I would, I, yeah, I, I, I wanna move this to staff to come back with a recommendation next week.
Counselor Richter, you actually answered your question, uh, based on the math, uh, so we're asking staff to do more work on it, so. But if, if there's a seconder, you referral, I'm interested in that. Uh, Counselor Davis, second. So it, it just, uh, comes back, and Mr. Sepey will provide us with some numbers on that. Counselor Davis, do you wanna speak to your referral?
Just simply, this will also put it to the next meeting, we can sleep on it, we can maybe think about it, and I, I, I know that it's gonna, I, I, I did the same figuring that you did, but I just, this might just give us a bit of time to think about, uh, this motion and see if, you know, I, I don't wanna, I, we just threw this in, and it was a knee-jerk reaction motion, well, in my opinion, sorry, but I did, you know what? If it had been a notice of, I think it might have, might have, I might have been better prepared for, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'll call the question on the referral, all those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed to the referral, Counselor Davis, Counselor Coons, uh, Counselor Arneson's opposed, Counselor Whitmore's opposed. Counselor Whitmarsh?
No, I'm, I'm not opposed.
Okay, I lost, I'm sorry, I lost count now, I'm gonna have to try again, okay, who's opposed? Put your hand up.
Opposed.
Counselor Coons, Counselor Arneson, Counselor Whitmore, Counselor Whitmarsh, and Mayor Pro's. Okay, so it's, the referral fails, we're back to the main motion, I'll call the question on the main motion. All those in favor? Opposed? I've got, Counselor Davis, Mayor Pro's, Counselor Arneson, Counselor Long, opposed, so that the motion carries. Okay, and is that completed, Counselor Whitmore?
Uh, yes, it does, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I will, uh, I will work with staff and, and look at reconsideration, or some way to, to, uh, we get a definitive vote on Seventy Second and two oh eight.
Yeah, we'll get that information to you, uh, first, we'll get the information to you.
Great, thank you.
Next time, thanks. All right, correspondence, um, one night of correspondence of a motion to receive. That letter, Counselor Arneson, in the seconder. Counselor Davis, seconds, and on, on this one, Counselor Davis? You're muted, Counselor Davis.
Okay, uh, K one, ministry request for representation on the A, uh, A, A C E C committee. Yes, I think that, uh, um, I think that, uh, when it comes time, and I believe, uh, that time is, was it in, uh, pretty soon, we'll talk about changing, uh, the committee number, um, I think we, I think it's not a problem, I think it's a good thing, it's, it's an absolutely agricultural oriented position, and, but along with the, uh, economic enhancement, uh, side of it, but I, I would support, um, somebody from the, uh, institution, pharmacy institution, uh, so having us teed on that committee.
Okay, so right now the motion's received, so we need a, just an amendment, go ahead with it, or a separate, Mr. Backen has to come, so what's the process?
Uh, your worship, I would suggest we receive the motion, and then have a separate motion perhaps to add a member of the, of Langley Farmers Institute in place of either a vacancy or a future public at large position.
So we'll just do this, uh, right now, we're just gonna, we want the receipt, so on receipt, uh, Counselor Richter?
Yes, I would like to receive it and refer it to the A A E E C to see what they think about it.
Um, okay, generally, it's council that makes the, makes up the, makes up the list, but we certainly do that, which is the seconder.
Well, why not?
So Davis, Counselor Davis, second, referring this to the A, A E E C, is there, is any discussion on the referral?
Yeah, just that, just, I'd like to, just to get their advice on it, and council can act on that advice, so, yeah.
Counselor Whitmarsh, on the referral?
Well, uh, ju- just as a comment, the, the interesting thing is that in the, in their letter, they're not only in, asking for a place on the A A E E C, but they're also asking for participation on the actual task force, the Future of Farming Task Force. So they're indicating two things that they would like, and so I don't know if that's separated or not, but I can see one, but maybe not the other, since the task, Future of Farming Task Force is already well on its way. Anyways, it's just up for discussion, so maybe we should send it to the A E C C just to get their opinion on both of those matters.
Fair enough, yeah, I'll call the question, oh, Mr. Backen?
Your worship, just a, just a technical question for the clerk's office more than anything. Right now, I believe the motion is to receive, announce, receive, and refer, so this means we're actually taking the minutes and referring them off to the, the A E C. I think the intention may have been to receive it first, and then have a separate motion to refer it, but it's up to the clerk.
Correspondence, the minutes, uh, this is correspondence.
That's correct, your worship, we're referring the correspondence to the A E C.
There's no minutes.
So, okay, so I think this is appropriate. All right, uh, Counselor, now I'm gonna call the question, on the referral, all those in favor? All those in favor, thank you. Uh, we have minutes, uh, please, Heritage, Price, you and CPC, and Council Process Committee, six, ten, eleven, have a motion to adopt those minute, the CPC minutes, and to receive the minutes of the Council, right?
Move by long.
Thank you, move by long, second by Coons, Counselor Coons, uh, I see still hands up, maybe a special one, get those hands up from before. Call the question, all those in favor? Get those hands up from before. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Short mayor support. Um, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. Been a long meeting so far and lots, lots on the table today. I'd like to start by congratulating, uh, Jordan Sparrow, firefighter, County of Langley, on his recent acclamation as president of the I A F F. Uh, Union four-five-five-zero, local four-five-five-zero. And we look forward to seeing what you'll accomplish in your role and working with you for the benefit of our community. So congratulations, firefighter Sparrow. On January nineteenth, Mayor Vandenberg, Mayor McCollum, Translic employees, uh, no Mayor Mc- uh, Quotey was there, is the chair. Of, uh, the Mayor's Council, and myself met virtually with Ministers Neiman, Fleming and Ma regarding the Surrey Langley Sky Train. Uh, this is an important project for Langley, so it's crucial that we have support from our provincial government representative. So we had a very good meeting, uh. Fill them in on where Translic was today and, uh, they sound, they sound very supportive and it is promising moving forward. Also, on January nineteenth, I attended the virtual Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce Dinner Meeting hosted by the R C P Community Liaison Officer. To discuss with the R C P is doing to keep others safe COVID-nineteen, as well as recent crime reports and statistics and crime prevention strategies for the Langley business community. On January twentieth, Counselors Ferguson and Kuntz attended an online event combating seniors' social isolation, also by the Langley seniors in action. Heard about what social isolation looks like and discussed solutions to reduce the number of isolated seniors in our community. On Thursday, January twenty-first, I participated in an audit video for the Langley Possibilities Society. The society is doing wonderful things for people with disabilities in the township, such as auditing public buildings around the community. Including the W C Blair Recreation Centre, and making recommendations on how to, how to better the facilities to accommodate those with disabilities. And even though, uh, the building code has, uh, a lot of, uh, uh, regulations on, on. Buildings and how to accommodate people, quite often they do fall short, so it's great that there's intensive community partners that want to assist. Brisa Health provide an update on the COVID-nineteen response on January twenty-second and discuss for areas that we can work collectively to respond to the ongoing crisis. Of course, the big news is, is that we now have a plan for a vaccine going out. And I know the, uh. Brisa Health and colleagues will be looking at municipalities, uh, to assist with, uh, facilities, uh, moving forward to do this massive operation. And finally, I wanna remind everyone that the twenty-twenty-one census will take place in May of this year. Competing your census, completing your census will support our community by gathering the data needed to gain, develop and evaluate programs and services. Such as schools, daycares, family services, housing, emergency services, roads, public transportation and skills training for employment. So it's very important that, uh, we all participate in the census so that, uh, we can get meaningful statistics that will help, uh, council and others, other levels of government. Plan for the future. Uh, so with that, that's my mayor's report, uh, several, um, committee meetings over the, over last week, uh, certainly, uh, we have the board, Metro Board meeting coming up, I know Counselor Richter and I. On Friday. So with that, that's my mayor's report. And I see two hands up. Uh, Counselor Whitmarsh? No, okay, uh, Counselor Ferguson.
Well, yeah, I, again, I'll be do quickly. I was happy to see that, uh, we met again for the new, like, Liquid Waste Committee. And Sav Dollywall, the Chair of Metro Vancouver, addressed this as well. He's happy with the work we've done. I'm happy to also hear that, um, the education program for Metro Vancouver is gonna continue and don't flush your pharmaceuticals. Unflushables and really, really difficult on the pipes and on the systems. And I recommended, uh, that to the committee, and they're gonna think about it, is how secondary treatment, uh, happens. And, um. I'm not sure if the public know there's little microscopic bugs that, uh, actually they piece on, uh, the material. So anyway, that's my, uh, my, uh, update for this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship. I'll make it quick. I know we don't have a lot of time. So on the fifteenth of January, I was at the Climate Action Committee for Metro. I just wanna point out for council that there has been an initiative going on that's gone forward. It's called the House Sound Bio-Region Initiative, and it's quite interesting. Across Canada, we have nineteen of these bio-regions, but in this case, it's a collaborative effort with the Squamish First Nation. And it's based on local community engagement and consensus. So the model is not a governance model like Metro. It's more a collaborative model. In order to ensure that whatever happens in that area is done in a sustainable manner. So I just wanted to, uh, comment on that, and, uh, that's it for me. Thank you.
Very much. Okay, so now we'll move on to, uh, other business, and I have Counselor Ferguson with, uh, notes and motions. Counselor Ferguson, you have the part. You're muted. Sorry, Counselor Ferguson, you're muted.
Be, okay, just wanted to move the motion. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do have, wanted to speak to it quickly.
All right, uh, is there a second or?
I'll second.
Arneson, Counselor Arneson, seconds, uh, go ahead, Counselor Ferguson.
Okay, yeah, just wanna say, I've just wanna thank you. You heard, uh, the beginning of year of our meet, regular meeting, uh, not that long ago. Is that you had acknowledged both Coast Salish, and I just wondered as a friendly amendment, Mr. Mayor, whether you wanted to add Coast Salish to, uh. K T Quatlin, Matsby, Sami Amu and Stolo Nation. If you, you also suggested that. Did you wanna accept that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Mayor?
You know, um, I think, if I could just speak to that, uh, when I read the motion, it's it's fairly open. It just says that we acknowledge, uh, with this, with our statement. So as long as the statement does, so I think to bog it down with, uh, word smithing it, um, there may be other mayors in the future who will have a different way of saying the same thing, but I think the main point is that it's covered acknowledging. Uh, I did add that, uh, I know there's several ways of, of doing this, and I I think what you have here is really, uh, the fact that we acknowledge it and it, it doesn't really put the words, uh. So if that's, if that's okay with you, I don't think we need a motion.
That's okay with me, yeah, that's fine.
All right, okay. All right, I'll call the questions. All those in favor? Opposed, and that carries, thank you. And move on to Counselor Richter, had a request of any immediate releases. Uh, I know, Mr. Backen, if you wanna start that off.
I appreciate we're very pushed for time. Can we just defer this to the next agenda? It's not a time-sensitive matter.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so let's move deferred to the next, um, meeting, next, uh, the next regular meeting, counsel, and it's the second by Counselor Davis, I believe. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed, carries. Is there any other business, Counselor Kuntz?
Yeah, I received a call, um, from an elderly person, uh, this afternoon about, um, not being able to access, loves to go swimming. Um, has some friends that are elderly that don't have access to computer, love to go swimming. But now that we've sort of, um, managing all of, um, those, you know, making reservations online. Um, how are they to do this when they are not computer savvy and really, really love to go swimming? So, um, uh. You know, and and we've actually heard about this, um, in the social isolation summit, um, from some of the seniors, how much they really love swimming at the swimming pool. And that very quickly, the, um, the spots get snapped up like really, really quickly. So. I just wanted to put that out there, uh, maybe staff can, um, you know, I can get back to this person because he was now going to get back to his. Um, his friends that, um, cannot get, um, go swimming because they simply can't access, um, a computer. So there must be a way to to figure this out.
So, um, Mr. Backen's writing down notes, so perhaps a memo to counsel on how, um, and and we can, uh, staff can reach out to you personally. So you can let the person know how they can access other than registration online.
Yeah, and I think it might be something that we should put out to the grander community or the greater community, um, and as well as, you know, what, what's the ramifications of, of opening up another, um. Swimming session, um, because I think it would be utilized.
That, thank you. Counselor Davis, on the business.
Yeah, yes, thank you. I'll be good. Um, uh, could we send the staff, um, to to engineering to to look at seventy-second and Crush Crescent? Where there's new, uh, development going right at the very bottom there and the, and coming down the hill. It, uh, comes, it's in two lanes, uh, new, new two lanes, and it joins into one lane. And it's on the convex side, and then it just totally ends, goes down into Crush Crescent. And there's a ditch there with a bulkhead, and it's a disaster waiting to happen. Um, it's on a convex. Convex side of the turn and and there's very little slope, but I would wonder how we're going to deal with that. Uh, when that development's up, how are we going to to merge those two? And, um, I'm just concerned, could, so could we just send that to. Engineering and have them look at it? And now that it's there, it looks worse than maybe it did on paper. Is that a friendly thing to do?
Oh, yeah, sure. Uh, staff contracts on that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Richter.
Um, yes, I have two items, uh, from items distributed on page, on the, um, the twenty-first of January. Number twenty-four on page ninety-two concerning, uh, streetlights at two twenty-first and forty-eight A. And number twenty-five on page ninety-three concerning road conditions on Fortieth Avenue between two forty-eighths and two fifty-six. I wonder if, um, staff could just update council on these and get in touch with the residents and let us know.
Yes, got that, thank you. All right, um, no other business, so now we'll move on to, uh, need a motion to resolve special post, the items on the agenda, there's nothing on favor, that's right, my client. So there it is on the agenda, to have a motion, please. Counselor Arneson moves, second, uh, second, Counselor Long.
So.
Yeah, I I'd like to, I'd like to say personnel item.
Sorry, there's other, other, hold it, other mics on, can you please turn off your mics? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Richter.
I'd like to add a personnel item, please.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, carries, thank you. And now I need a motion to terminate. Counselor Whitmarsh moves, uh, second by Counselor Davis, all those in favor? Opposed, carries, thank you. And thanks, everyone, for, for, uh, watching.